Councilmember Barosa de Padilla, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
This evening council is grateful to have Pastor Timothy Liggins of Bethel AME Church to pray with us. Pastor, welcome back to council. And Commissioner.
Thank you. Good evening to everyone. Let us pray. Eternal God, our heavenly Father, we come to you in prayer, first thanking you for the love, for your love and your mercies. We thank you for the love that you have for the residents of this great city. And we thank you for these civil servants who have responded to the call that you have placed in their hearts. We thank you for how you have orchestrated it for them to be in the position they are in for such a time as this. Oh God, there are many challenges that stand before us, but that is why we look to you first. For every problem has a solution and you are able to divinely lead and guide into all wisdom. Oh God, our faith tells us that nothing is too hard for you. It tells us that you are able to work all things together for good. And it tells us that you know the plans that you have for the residents of this city, plans for our good and not for evil. So God bless this meeting. Father bless these your servants. Grant them divine wisdom, guidance and courage. Give them a heart that is after your heart, that they too will want to do justice and love mercy. And bless all who will take part this evening. Let love and patience rule in these proceedings. We are believing for great outcomes for this city by way of this meeting. And Lord, for all of your blessings and all of your grace, we are careful to give your name all the glory and all the praise. In the matchless name of our Lord and Savior, we pray. Let everyone say amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dorance Favor, Remy, President Harden. Any person who takes any action to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion dismissed for the reading of the journal? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dorance Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the journal? Hearing none, the journal is approved. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be written to the record?
None received.
Thank you. We will now go around the dais for resolutions or updates from councilmembers, starting with Councilmember Bangston. Thank you. Councilmember Barosa de Padilla.
Thank you. I just, we want to thank folks who came out. It was a busy week last week for the first immigrant migrant refugee town hall and also for the pay equity workshop. We had a great turnout at both. I just want folks to mark their calendars for April 19th. That is a, I thought I had it in my notes and I don't, give me one second. That is a Wednesday. We'll be having our second immigrant migrant refugee town hall. We are calling them Immigrants Make Columbus. And you can find out more information and RSVP at immigrantsmakecolumbus.com. That's all for me this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Dorance. Councilmember Favor.
Thank you, Council President Harden. The month of April is Second Chance Month. In the United States, one in three American adults has a criminal record, which limits their access to education, jobs, housing, among other things necessary for a productive life. Even after they have completed their sentences and have been released from prison, these men and women face more than 44,000 documented legal restrictions in addition to widespread social stigma. This is sometimes called the second prison. This all occurs against the backdrop of the criminal justice system's stark racial imbalances. People of color, particularly black Americans, are disproportionately represented at every stage of the US criminal justice system, from arrests to reintegration. Now more than ever, it is crucial that we raise awareness about the challenges men and women face upon reentry as they seek healthcare, housing and employment. Second Chance Month, spearheaded by the Prison Fellowship in 2017, aims to raise awareness and improve perceptions of people with a criminal record, encourage second chance opportunities and drive momentum for policy change throughout the country. Myself and my colleagues here on Columbus City Council remain committed to helping Justice Involved Residents lead successful lives. Through innovative ideas such as Opportunity Port, supporting local organizations, working with returning citizens and more, we continue to learn and pass progressive policies to support all Columbus residents. This month, I encourage you to engage in conversation, learn and participate in ways to support returning citizens in our community. Additionally, the last week of April, our community will celebrate National Reentry Week. This week will provide an opportunity to reflect on and educate Columbus on the importance of equitable restorative reentry practices and the need for smart justice measures at all parts of the criminal justice continuum. This year, Central Ohio's Reentry Partners will host a variety of events, including professional development webinars, a community resource fair, a multidisciplinary art exhibition, and advocacy training at the State House for community members with lived experience, and a community-wide event featuring internationally acclaimed author and anti-violence expert Danielle Serried. Details for these events will be highlighted on council's social media channels and those interested in learning more can visit www.centralohireentryweek.com. I now have the honor of presenting Resolution 0043X-2023 to designate April 2023 as National Fair Housing Month within the city of Columbus. I'd now like to invite Melissa Benson with Columbus Legal Aid to the podium. National Fair Housing Month celebrates the passage of the Fair Housing Act of 1968. The Fair Housing Act was created to put an end to inequities within the housing system and eliminate racial segregation in American neighborhoods. Historical legacies of discriminatory housing policies are still evident within Ohio with 33% and 31% of black and Hispanic renters respectively experiencing severe housing problems compared to only 23% of white renters. The city of Columbus aims to increase awareness of fair housing issues, eliminate intolerance and biased behavior among individuals and groups working within the housing space. As Chair of City Council's Housing Committee, I am proud to have passed the Housing for All legislative package, which included source of income discrimination, renters' choice security deposit and rentals receipt to protect our tenants' rights. Earlier this month, we also shared council's 2023 housing initiatives, where we will dig deeper and pass more policies to protect residents and promote fair housing. City Council remains committed to securing equal opportunity for all as well as providing encouragement to those whose housing needs have yet to be realized. Melissa Benson, I'll turn the podium over to you now.
Thank you, Councilmember Favor, and thank you to all of City Council for inviting me to be here today as you recognize April as Fair Housing Month. All of the residents of the state of Ohio and the city of Columbus are protected by fair housing law and deserve to rent, purchase and finance their housing free of discrimination on the basis of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, familial status, disability and military status. Further, in the city of Columbus, additional protections are recognized on the basis of sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, age and source of income. Through our partnership with the city of Columbus, LASC works to enforce fair housing rights for residents of the area. Through our work with the Department of Housing and Urban Development, we enforce those rights throughout the region. In the past year, we have assisted more than 100 Columbus residents facing housing discrimination. This is just the tip of the iceberg. We have filed complaints on behalf of Columbus residents with the Ohio Civil Rights Commission for fair housing violations including race and disability discrimination and sexual harassment by landlords. We have raised fair housing violations in defense of eviction actions and proposed subsidy terminations, ensuring that Columbus tenants do not lose their homes due to discrimination. We have obtained numerous reasonable accommodations for disabled Columbus residents so that they may fully use and enjoy their rental housing. And most recently, we were pleased to partner with the city of Columbus to preserve the housing voucher, to preserve the housing for 61 voucher holder tenants at a Northside complex when their landlord sent them a notice that their vouchers would no longer be accepted in violation of the city's source of income discrimination ordinance. Among these tenants were veterans, senior citizens, people with disabilities and immigrants. Many had lived in the complex without issue for over a decade before being told that their vouchers would no longer be accepted. One resident, a 68-year-old Army veteran, told the Columbus Dispatch, "I'm so frustrated right now. I just don't understand where they get the idea that they can do this and they don't have to answer to the law." Thanks to our partnership with the city of Columbus to enforce fair housing laws, we were able to advocate for these tenants with the city attorney's office and hold the complex accountable to the law. The city responded quickly, sending a letter to the complex, which prompted the withdrawal of the notice preserving the tenancies of 61 vulnerable Columbus residents who were asked to move out simply because part of their income came from Section 8. We look forward to continuing to partner with the city to create a robust enforcement mechanism for source of income discrimination and the other protections guaranteed under fair housing law and the Housing for All legislative package. We will continue to expand our fair housing work, help to educate the community about fair housing rights and will create a testing program to better protect all Columbus residents from discrimination in housing. In today's housing market, the most vulnerable Columbus residents, racial and ethnic minorities, single mothers, people with disabilities, immigrants, they face many, many challenges in finding safe, stable housing. Discrimination should not be among them. We must work to enforce the fair housing protections that exist in our city in order to create a stronger, more diverse and more stable Columbus for all who live here. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Benson, and we truly do appreciate the work and the advocacy and partnership that comes from the Legal Aid Society of Columbus. You all continue to do great work. We're incredibly excited to have now extended our partnership to include this fair housing element. And you know, the reality is that we can pass all of the progressive housing policies that we want to, but if there are not measures in place to ensure that individuals that are experiencing discrimination have a way to report those, those instances and then those instances be investigated, then this makes all of the work for naught, right? So thank you for the work that you all continue to do. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I'd move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dorance Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Thank you.
All right, next I have Resolution 0056X-2023 to designate April 10th through the 14th, 2023, as National Community Development Week in the city of Columbus. The city of Columbus is a participant in the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, Home Investment Partnerships Emergency Solutions Grant and Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS programs. These critical community development programs provide funds from the Department of Housing and Urban Development for public infrastructure, economic development and housing programs in our community. Through this partnership, Columbus has dedicated resources to secure housing or shelter for our most vulnerable populations, including low to moderate income and those experiencing homelessness. During the week of April 10th through the 14th, we observe National Community Development Week to give special recognition to all participants whose hard work and devotion to the neighborhoods and the residents help ensure the quality and effectiveness of the community development programs. With that, I'd like to hand it over to Director Stevens to provide some additional remarks.
Thank you, President Harden, Chair Favor, members of council. I'd actually like to introduce my colleague Rita Parise, who's our Housing Division Administrator, who runs these programs and can give us a little more insight on the importance of community development and what we'll be recognizing that week. So I will hand it over to Rita, who I can hear coming up now.
Good evening, President Harden and Chair Favor. While we recognize the work that we do, sometimes it feels like it's never done and we recognize that there is a lot more to accomplish. We are going to take an opportunity for Community Development Week to take a breather and pat ourselves on the back a little bit for the good work that we've done. We thank the mayor and city council for the tremendous support that we have had in accomplishing many goals with many more yet to come. We are actually doing an event on the 13th where we are going to be inviting elected officials to join us to have discussion around the whole affordable housing realm and the work that goes into it and the housing strategy and also do a tour of some of our multifamily projects in the Franklinton neighborhood. We're really excited about this. Clearly, all councilmembers have been invited. We would love to see you join us and/or your aides if they can. But it is going to be a great week for us to actually celebrate a little bit for the work that we've done and be thankful for the great team that we have to get us there.
Thank you so much, Ms. Parise. Ms. Parise Sore, Director Stevens, if folks want to learn a little bit more about Community Development Week, is there a place for them to go?
Yeah, you go to columbus.gov/development. We have information on the week there.
Wonderful. Any questions or comments by my colleagues? Yes. Councilmember Bangston.
No, I just wanted to just reiterate how great a week this is to celebrate. You know, often when we think about development, we think about the bricks and sticks of the work, right? Which is the easy part that we can see. But community development really centers people and our families. And so it's messier, it's harder to explain sometimes and a little bit wonkier, but it is the transformation that you see in places like Franklinton and Hilltop, the one lending the community plan that comes to life when community and government and private sector stack hands and say that we want to make a change in our neighborhood. So thank you, Deputy Director, and thank you to our housing administrator for all the work that you've done through the years in helping to transform our neighborhoods and the lives of so many people. So thank you and congratulations.
Thank you, Councilmember, and he's absolutely correct. This work does center people. So we appreciate the work that the department does to help support our various partners across the city that are doing great work to serve our residents. With that, I'd move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dorance Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Adopted.
I gotta get 10,000 steps today, so this is helping me out. And last but certainly not least, Council President Harden, with your permission, I have one resolution I'd like to introduce from the floor. At this time, I'd like to invite Dorian Wingard and Jessica Roach to come forward to the podium to introduce Resolution 0061X-2023 to designate April 11th through April 17th as Black Maternal Health Week in the city of Columbus and recognize Restoring Our Own Through Transformation for their ongoing efforts to raise awareness for black maternal and infant health. The US has the highest maternal mortality rates in the developed world with 32.9 deaths per 100,000 live births in 2021. And this number is even more shocking for black women. In 2021, the maternal mortality rate for black women was 69.9 deaths per 100,000 live births, 2.6 times the rate for non-Hispanic white women. This phenomenon has numerous root causes, including gaps in healthcare, social determinants of health, economic disparities and racism, as evidenced by the fact that black women are disproportionately more likely to suffer from perinatal mood and anxiety disorders like postpartum depression without access to the healthcare resources necessary to address it. Further, gaps in access to basic reproductive healthcare, like STI screenings and abortion, contraception access and counseling leaves black women at higher risk for health implications from pregnancy. And a cornerstone of any plan to address these inequities involves recognizing black-led doula and midwifery care as a sound, evidence-based form of health care for black women and birthing people, providing life-saving services and reducing the mortality rates among these vulnerable populations. Black Maternal Health Week is celebrated annually to uplift the voices of black women and birthing people through advocacy efforts to ensure they retain their fundamental right to bodily autonomy and safety. Restoring Our Own Through Transformation is a Columbus-based organization led by black women who are dedicated to raising awareness for black maternal and infant health through doula services and training, research, education and consultation. With that, I'd now like to turn the podium over to Ms. Roach and Mr. Wingard to say a few words on this resolution.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Favor. We really appreciate that. Council President Harden, councilmembers, thank you for having us today. We appreciate the acknowledgement of Black Maternal Health Week 2023. My name is Jessica Roach and I'm the Chief Executive Officer of Restoring Our Own Through Transformation and this is my partner and COO, Dorian Wingard. Root provides comprehensive, full-spectrum perinatal support doula services. That draws a distinction in that because we are there with the family through family planning, throughout the entire prenatal period, through labor and delivery and through extended postpartum. We're there for all aspects of the black family in order to make sure we can create healthy environments. Root also engages on a national level, public health policy, advocacy, research and education of interdisciplinary professionals because we know that it is important and is necessary in order to be able to change the spectrum of care how, as to how it impacts us as black families. Black Maternal Health Week was created six years ago by the Black Mamas Matter Alliance to raise awareness around the black maternal health crisis in this country. Root, as the first kindred partner of the Black Mamas Matter Alliance, has utilized our platform and the shared responsibility in the relationship that we have developed with the Black Mamas Matter Alliance over these years to elevate the message and care of black mothers, black fathers and black children. The black maternal mortality rate nationally has increased significantly over the last few years. Specifically from 2019 to 2021, Councilmember Favor quoted those stats for us. We've seen a 40% increase in black maternal mortality over these last few years. And despite the abysmal rates that we see even reflected in our own city, Root as an organization has maintained a 0% black maternal and infant mortality since its inception in 2017. Root understands the key to having healthy black infants is to ensure the health and well-being of the black family. The black maternal mortality and morbidity rate is intricately tied to our birth outcomes. So it is no surprise that our black infant mortality rates continue to rise. Both are caused by medical misinformation, neglect, obstetric and systemic racism. There is no biological or genetic basis for our health outcomes. Black race is not a behavioral health risk. Obstetric racism is. The mortality rate of our infants and families is utilized nationally as a public health indicator. Therefore, it is a reflection of our city. And while the mayor's discussing the state of the city address infant vitality, we still as a city have failed to address the infant mortality issue that we have. While this resolution recognizing Black Maternal Health Week is sincerely appreciated and in particular, Councilmembers Bangston and Favor for championing the work that we do at Root, it must be understood that it will take more than a week of awareness to be able to address and ensure the safety and well-being of black families. True health equity will only be achieved by supporting the community-based organizations that have proven their effect, their efficacy in these initiatives. We thank you very much for your time and we appreciate the acknowledgement.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for the work that you all do every single day. This is, I know, a labor of love. See that pun I did there, labor birthing? Y'all got it. It's truly a labor of love and I mean this with all sincerity. You all truly meet the family where they're at and it is individualized care. You have a model that works and we are incredibly grateful for the work that you continue to do in meeting parents, families, loved ones where they're at. This is going to take a lot of work for us to chip away at these numbers and they have only gone up for 2022/2023. And so it is time for us to get loud and aggressive as we can to tackle this problem at hand. I know Councilmember Bangston probably has something he'd like to say as well.
Well, first off to Dorian and Jessica, thank you for all you do in this community. You all said it best and said it well. I know me and you have had lengthy conversations about this and it is about, yes, saving our black babies, but we also have to save our black mamas. And in order to do that, we're going to continue to raise awareness. But it is my hope that one day in our lifetime, we will celebrate this week not as a week of awareness, but as a week of triumph, triumph over systemic racism and systemic issues that have plagued our country and our city for way too long, particularly in the healthcare sector. Because this is an issue that is urgent. It is a matter that, it is literally life or death. And I've seen the work that you all have done firsthand and that is what makes the difference. Not only being with someone through the health aspects of their pregnancy, but empowering women and empowering families to be able to stand up and know what is happening in those doctor's offices and in the birthing process, having a plan in place. That's what truly makes the difference and that's what you're doing every single day. We can't do it at scale just yet, but we're working on it. And so in the meantime, thank you for what you're continuing to do. Thank you for continuing to be an advocate and activist in this space and we celebrate this week unfortunately for what it is for, but we want to continue to raise awareness.
And we're celebrating ahead of time because we don't have a council meeting next week, but we want to make sure that folks know that it's coming down the pipeline so that they can get prepared and attend events accordingly. Councilmember Remy? Okay. Anyone, any other councilmembers have any thoughts at this time?
I just wanted to echo our councilmembers and just say thank you. I think, um, doulas, my children aren't even that old, but doulas were not something that was commonplace. And I remember looking, looking very hard to try to find a doula and try to find a culturally competent doula was even harder. And so I went without that at a time where it was incredibly scary and when you have complications and having someone who can truly be an advocate for you and for your family is life-changing, literally. And so I just wanted to acknowledge and thank you for your work and thank you for elevating this for all of us because I think every time we do a month or a week, it's never about that time. It's about amplifying and raising the volume, but it's an ongoing effort 365 days of the year. So thank you.
Absolutely, spot on. If folks want to learn more about Black Maternal Health Week, where can they go?
They can go to our website at www根with2tsrij.org. And they can also check out our Instagram page and our Twitter page, which is also @root, two Ts, RJ. And then our Facebook page is actually just Root by itself and that again is with two Ts. And if I could just have a moment and say thank you again for, for your comments and for the support. It is very obvious for us in the way in which we have our model and being clear about how it is that we need to address black families, that that is a consistent theme in the success of being able to make sure that we are addressing the black maternal mortality and infant mortality rate. And so it is incredibly important for us to be very focused in a health equity way to make sure that our families are at the center and that everyone in that family is honored in that process.
Thank you so much. With that, I'd move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dorance Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Adopted.
I believe that is all for me, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Remy.
Thank you very much, Council President. I have one announcement, one resolution this evening. This past Saturday, I hosted the Second Annual Cleaner Columbus Citywide Cleanup, and we had a wonderful time with the weather before it got to be 60 mile an hour winds. That turned, it turned out to be a great day, though, to pick up litter, and our preliminary numbers continue to grow. But as of 5 o'clock today, we had 338 volunteers pick up in 48, 40 areas of town. That's almost 680 hours of volunteer time. There were 802 bags of litter. That's over 12,313 pounds of litter out of our neighborhoods. So congratulations to our city for a day's worth of effort, and it was just a good opportunity as I drove through town, seeing people throughout every intersection. There were people in yellow vests. It was really great. So thank you to everyone who came out for this day of action to kick off Earth Month. If you want to join in on the action this month, you can reach out to Keep Columbus Beautiful or Green Columbus for more information. So speaking of Earth Month, I'd also like to invite our guests from Keep Columbus Beautiful and Suaco up, Ari Alex and Joe Lombardi, to the podium as I introduce Resolution 50X 2023 to recognize April 10th through the 16th, 2023, as Food Waste Prevention Week in the City of Columbus. It is estimated that as much as 40% of the food supply in the United States goes uneaten, and almost 95% of wasted food is disposed in landfills or in incinerators, where it represents the largest component of disposed municipal solid waste. Food waste disposed of in landfills emits methane, a potent greenhouse gas that contributes to climate change. The natural resources used to produce food, such as energy, land, and water, also are wasted when food is thrown away. We know that 13% of Columbus adults and children are food insecure and therefore do not have a reliable source of food to support a healthy and active lifestyle. In fact, the average American family wastes an average of approximately $1,800 worth of food per year. The City of Columbus's Climate Action Plan has a goal of reducing 95% of organic material going to the landfill by 2050. The Columbus and Franklin County Local Food Action Plan identifies the prevention of food-related waste through increased consumer education, household composting, technical assistance to food businesses, and regulatory updates that support food waste diversion. Reducing the amount of food going to waste and diverting it from disposal mitigates climate change, conserves natural resources, feeds hungry Columbus residents, saves money, and produces beneficial products such as soil amendment and energy. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City, Council of the City of Columbus, that this council does hereby declare its commitment to reducing food waste as part of the city's Climate Action Plan and recognizes the week of April 10th through the 16th, 2023, as Food Waste Prevention Week in the City of Columbus, Ohio. Thank you so much, and I'm excited to have Ari Alex, Sustainability Manager and Keep Columbus Beautiful Executive Director, and Joe Lombardi, the Executive Director of Solid Waste Authority of Central Ohio, to speak on this resolution. Ari, Joe, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, President Harden, President Protam Dorance, Chair Remy, and Councilmembers. Thank you for this opportunity to speak about Food Waste Prevention Week that begins next Monday, April 10th. My name is Ari Alex, and I have the privilege of working on our city's food waste efforts with the Department of Public Service and Division of Refuge Collection. Reducing food waste has the power to feed people rather than landfills, save money, and conserve resources. Our goal is to raise awareness and inspire people to reduce food waste in their homes, workplaces, and communities. Up to 40% of food in the United States is wasted, contributing to extensive, extensive environmental, economic, and societal impacts. There's an estimated 51,000 tons of edible food from our city's waste stream that goes to the landfill every year. By reducing the amount of food that is thrown out, Columbus, Columbus can make progress towards climate and sustainability goals. By rescuing surplus food, we can address food gaps in our communities. The City of Columbus has an aggressive, yet achievable, goal of carbon neutrality by 2050 with our city's Climate Action Plan. To achieve that goal, we must have a 90% reduction in organic waste that goes to our landfill. When reached, this will result in saving over 133,000 metric tons of greenhouse gas emissions and make a significant contribution towards our climate goals. To help meet those goals, the city has developed a partnership with Suaco's Save More Than Food campaign that'll educate residents how to reduce, rescue, and recycle food to save resources and ensure healthier communities. I'm also excited to highlight that with grant funding from Suaco, Columbus will launch its first-ever food waste pilot program this year. Residents will be able to collect and drop off their food waste at five different sites, at two new waste and reuse convenience centers, and three food waste drop-off sites at recreation centers in our city. We are excited to launch this program later this year, and more details will follow. Thank you so much for your time and continued support of these efforts, and I will hand it over to my friend and partner, Joe Lombardi from Suaco.
Thanks, Ari. President Harden, Councilmember Remy, and other members of council, it's great to be back in this chamber to discuss a very important issue of our region. I am pleased that Columbus City Council is recognizing Food Waste Prevention Week with this resolution. I'm joined this evening by Scott Perry, Assistant Executive Director, and Jane Bohm, Food Waste Programs Administrator for Suaco. Most of us have probably are familiar with the national statistics about the amount of food being wasted in America, but food waste isn't something just happening in other communities. Wasted food is the single largest source of landfill material in central Ohio. In fact, the county landfill receives nearly a million pounds of food waste each day, while in our community, one out of five residents are at risk of food insecurity. There is also an economic impact as millions of dollars are lost every year due to food waste. Those are sobering statistics when you consider all the impacts throwing away the food from our dinner plates has on our environment, our community, and our economy. To address this issue, Suaco and the Central Ohio Food Waste Initiative launched an awareness campaign regarding the impact of food waste known as Save More Than Food. While there is no single solution to solve this complex issue, but as we have recently shared with NBC Nightly News and has been reported by the New York Times, Suaco is working with many partners to tackle this issue on several fronts. As Suaco's largest customer and with a population that continues to grow in central Ohio, we must all work together to ensure Columbus's activities will have a big impact on our regional efforts to become more sustainable. We applaud the thoughtfulness of the Columbus Climate Action Plan and the bold initiatives by the administration and Columbus City Council toward addressing climate change, which will undoubtedly benefit all of us. As your regional partner, Suaco can help. We appreciate our partnership with the City of Columbus and look forward to building up on our many efforts together to enhance recycling, including capturing more hard-to-recycle materials at convenience centers, as well as creating opportunities to divert food waste from the landfill through a new grant program, as Ari talked about, with Columbus Recreation and Parks. Only by working together will be, will we be able to take care of our environment and enhance the quality of life in our community. For more information about the Save More Than Food program, please visit savemorethanfood.org. Thank you again for this resolution and the opportunity to speak in support of it.
Thank you very much for your ongoing efforts in raising awareness for this important issue. It's, it's critical that we do something to start making an impact, and I'm looking forward to having and promoting these food waste drop-off centers, which will be so integral in our work towards the Climate Action Plan. So thank you again. I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Dorance Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Adopted.
And that is all I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Remy. Are there any comments by other elected officials, city attorneys, the auditor, city treasurer's office? Seeing none, at this time, I request the following ordinance to be removed from the consent portion of the agenda. We have Technology Ordinance 0887-2023, Public Service and Transportation Ordinance 0760-2023, Housing Ordinance 0917-2023, Health and Human Services Ordinances 0759-2023, 0866-2023, and 1021-2023. Are there any other requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance on the, or on the consent portion of the agenda? Hearing none, may we now have a motion to waive reading of titles of 30-day legislation. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Dorance Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Will the clerk now read into the record the number of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda?
Technology Committee Ordinance 729, Ordinance 807, 904-2023, Public Service and Transportation Resolution 42X-2023, Ordinances 423, 688, 863, 874, 937-2023, Recreation and Parks Ordinance 755-2023, Public Utilities Ordinance 551, 564, 599, 691, 697, 744, 745, 761, 797, 826, 957-2023, Building and Zoning Policy Ordinance 0870-2023, Housing Ordinance 784, 871, 947-2023, Public Safety Ordinance 121-2023, Environment Committee Ordinance 873-2023, Administration 846, and 928-2023, Finance Committee Ordinance 802, 822, 923,
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The following ordinance appear on our agenda as considered actions. Will the clerk read those into the record?
Resolution 49X, 52X, 55X, 47X, 45X, 53X, and 54X-2023, Economic Development Resolution 46X-2023, Ordinance 792, 794, 795, 796, 800, 803, 804, 806, 808, and 974-2023, Public Service and Transportation Ordinance 653-2023, 686, 689, 742, 743, 793, 799, 816-2023, Neighborhoods and Immigrant Refugee and Migrant Affairs Ordinance 912-2023, Recreation and Parks Ordinance 98, 434, 435, 437, 441, 751, 757, and 938-2023, Public Utilities Ordinance 726, 764, and 801-2023, Housing Committee Ordinance 823, 864, 930-2023, Criminal Justice and Judiciary Ordinance 769, 770, 771, and 778-2023, or 788-2023, Health and Human Services Ordinance 715, 829, 857-2023, Public Safety Ordinance 382, 705, paper's stuck, 737, 790, 798, 837, 860, and 953-2023, Environment Committee Ordinance 964-2023, Administration Ordinance 694, 695, 696, and 776-2023, Finance Committee Ordinance 3237-2022, Ordinance 675, 682, 692, 781, 845, and 867-2023, Appointments from the Mayor, A103, A104, A105, A106, and A107-2023.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have one speaker on the consent portion of the agenda. Felina Farley?
Yes.
All right, welcome to council. If you would state your name, and if you're representing an organization, and you'll have three minutes to speak, it looks like you're speaking on Ordinance 0953 in Public Safety. Welcome to council.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Hello, I'm Felina Farley, the National Black Caucus Media Co-Chair of the Green Party, and I'm here to talk about police accountability and reflect on the media biases of injustices and Black, and Black issues. So we call for an end to police brutality, immunity, and abuse of power. Over the past few decades, there has been numerous videotaped excessive force crimes against and killings of Black Americans at the hands of white officers or other law enforcement. And we do endorse a proposed congressional resolution that calls for the end to racial disparities in the application of U.S. police practices and shift towards public safety and security that is community-oriented. It is necessary that a just society recognizes that all people have equal access to resources. Police need to be held accountable to end racism. Community-based policing ensures that law enforcement agencies reflect the racial makeup of their communities and are democratically controlled. And we need to see these changes. We need to see an accountability model that eliminates the ability of police unions to defend officers accused of misconduct, and that is essential to finally putting an end to the killing of unarmed Black men, women, and children by police. So I, we do endorse this community police patrol as long as it also includes patrolling the police. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farley. Are there any comments or questions for Ms. Farley? All right. Thank you for being with us, the council. Are there any other questions or comments about the consent portion of the agenda? Hearing none, may I have a motion for approval of these items? Clerk, please call the row by voice? No, just by, call the row then.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Dorance Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed. We will now proceed with the second reading of 30-day postponed and emergency legislation. The first committee coming for counsel is the Technology Committee chaired by Councilmember Bangston. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. We have one item on second read in the Technology Committee. It's Ordinance 0887-2023, found on page 11 in our agenda, to authorize the Director of the Department of Technology to enter into an agreement with ORNET/OSU for VMware software licensing, maintenance, and support pursuant to Columbus City Code sections relating to non-for-profit service contracts to authorize the expenditure of $406,689.34 from the Department of Technology Information Services Operating Fund and to declare an emergency. I move to postpone this ordinance until the April 24th meeting.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston?
Yes.
Barrosa de Padilla?
Yes.
Dorance? Favor? Remy? President Harden?
Yes, ordinance is postponed.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committees this evening.
Next committee coming for counsel is the Public Service Transportation Committee, chaired by Councilmember Lores Barrosa de Padilla. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Ordinance 0932-2023, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to establish purchase orders and contracts with multiple vendors for the purchase of various traffic management and control commodities for the Department of Public Service to author the, authorize the expenditure of up to $1,600,000 from the Street Construction Maintenance and Repair Fund for the purchase of various traffic management and control commodities and to declare an emergency. The Department of Public Service, sorry, utilizes pavement marking materials, sign manufacturing materials, school flashers, traffic signal commodities, and a variety of traffic management and control commodities throughout the city. These supplies and materials are necessary to ensure traffic safety throughout the City of Columbus. Do any of my colleagues have questions or comments? Great, seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla,
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Dorrance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, and if we could go back to the consent agenda, page twelve, uh, ordinance zero seven six zero twenty twenty-three, to authorize the transfer appropriate of appropriation within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund to authorize the Director of Public Service to reimburse various utilities for utility relocation costs incurred in conjunction with the Columbus Traffic Signal System Phase F project, to authori- authorize the expenditure of two hundred fifty thousand dollars in the Streets and Highway Bonds Fund to pay for the utility relocation costs and to declare an emergency. I would like to move to amend to thirty day legislation.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston?
Say.
Barrosa de Padilla?
Yes.
Dorrance?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Remy?
Yes.
President Harden.
Yes, amended.
Thank you. Uh, can I move on to Veterans, Senior, and Disability Affairs?
Please.
Uh, we have one ordinance today, it's zero six two zero twenty twenty-three, to authorize, I got you, to authorize and direct the appropriation and transfer of five hundred thirty-two thousand four hundred eighty-nine dollars from the Recreation and Parks Operating Fund to the Recreation and Parks Grant Fund to support Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging Programs that help older adults and individuals with disabilities remain safe and independent in their homes and to declare an emergency. The C O triple A Housing Assistance Program focuses on keeping older adults out of the shelter and preventative efforts to reduce eviction, displacement, and homelessness. The Spark partnership between the Columbus Division of Fire and C O triple A began in twenty eighteen to connect high-volume users of emergency medical services, so EMS, to consistent medical care and supportive services. Along with their React pro, uh, along with React, Spark has served the cities, has served as the city's first alternative crisis response. Spark social workers and Columbus Fire Department paramedics conduct follow-up visits, resource navigation, and wraparound support services to residents in crisis. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second, is there a second? Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Dorrance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, that's all for my committees this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next committee to come before council is the, uh, Veteran, sorry, the Recreation and Parks Committee, uh, chaired by Councilmember Dorrance today.
Thank you, Council President, uh, and Recreation Parks way of ordinance zero four three six dash twenty twenty-three, to authorize the Director of Recreation Parks to enter a contract with Orchard Hiltz and McClint for the Marion Franklin and Tuttle Swimming Pool Replacement Design Project, to authorize the appropriation of four hundred and twenty thousand dollars within the CDGB fund in accordance with draft fiscal year twenty twenty-three annual action plan as approved by council, to authorize the transfer of one million five hundred and fifty-five thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars within the Recreation, uh, Recreation and Parks Voted Bond Fund to authorize amendment of the twenty twenty-two capital improvement budget, to authorize the expenditure of one million nine hundred and seventy-five thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars from the CDGB Fund and the Recreation and Parks Voted Bond Fund and declare an emergency. After serving the city of Columbus for more than fifty years, the pools at Marion Franklin and Tuttle Parks, uh, need to be replaced in order to function in an efficient and safe manner. Uh, both pools will be more inclusive to persons with various abilities and meet the requirements obtained by the public outreach activities, which were part of the Columbus Recreation Parks Aquatics Capital Improvement Plan, uh, with the intent of the design to increase the capacity for programming and increase attendance at the pools. Uh, emergency action is being requested so that design can be completed by December twenty twenty-three, allowing for the opportunity for construction of the pools to be built, um, with minimum impact swimming lessons in twenty twenty-four. Do my colleagues have questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Dorrance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance zero four three nine dash twenty twenty-three, to authorize the Director of Recreation Parks to enter into a contract with Ryder Company for the Champions Bridge Superstructure Replacement and the Allen Creek's, uh, Stream Bank Stabilization Project, to authorize the transfer of one million six hundred, six hundred and seventy-two thousand ninety, sixty dollars and ninety-eight cents within the Recreation and Parks Voted Bond Fund, to authorize the amendment to the twenty twenty of capital improvements budget, to authorize expenditure of one million six hundred and seventy-five thousand three hundred and twenty dollars from the Recreation and Parks Voted Bond Fund and declare an emergency. Uh, Champions Bridge is located along Allen Creek Trail between East and Soccer Fields and the Seventh Hole on the Champions Golf Course. In twenty fifteen, when the fa- false decking was removed from the bridge, the, the deck deflated, leaving an uneven ride and feeling over the bridge. At the time, an investigation was performed, and it was determined that the bridge had to, had to load, had a load posted, which was prohibited emergency vehicles from crossing, uh, the bridge. It's determined to be safe for pedestrians, remained open, but closed to vehicular traffic. The bridge, however, does not function per its intended design. An error in the design, designing the bridge is the sole cause for the deflections and movement of the structure when in use. The city attorney's office, along with the defense legal council, have been working for several years to mitigate the issue. Uh, for the safety of all trail users, it was decided that the bridge needed to be mitigated and that the damages would be pursued concurrently with construction activities, uh, perhaps after completion. Uh, emergency action is requested in the interest of public safety, as it is the imperative of the bridge to be corrected to accommodate emergency vehicles' access to the Allen Creek Trail in that area. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Dorrance, Remy, favor, Dorrance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have zero seven four eight dash twenty twenty-three, to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation Parks to enter an agreement, accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Education in the amount of two million five hundred thousand dollars for the twenty twenty-three summer food program, to authorize the appropriation of two million five hundred thousand dollars from the Recreation Parks Grant Fund, to enter an agreement with Columbus City Schools in the amount of two, two million three hundred thousand for the preparation and delivery of meals for the summer food program, to authorize the expenditure of up, of two million three hundred thousand dollars from the Recreation and Parks Grant Fund and declare an emergency. Uh, the summer food program is administered by the U.S. Department of Agriculture through this, through the Ohio Department of Education. Uh, the program provides, uh, nutritionally balanced breakfast, lunches, and snacks to qualify our children in need during the summer months at no cost. Uh, the program will serve near, nearly one hundred thousand breakfasts, one hundred and fifty thousand lunch meals, and twenty thousand snacks. Uh, thousands of children will be served throughout the program at the one hundred to one hundred and fifty sites throughout the greater Columbus area. Emergency action is being requested to ensure timely provision of free meals, uh, for the program, which begins on June first. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Dorrance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, Council President. Like to move on to Public Utilities?
Please.
Thank you. Uh, first, we have ordinance zero five nine eight dash twenty twenty-three, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter a construction contract with Complete General Construction Company for the Linden Neighborhood Storm Water System Improvement Phase Two Project, in the amount of up to two million six hundred and twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-six cents, to authorize the appropriation of expenditure of up to two million six hundred and twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and sixty, sixty-six cents in the water, Ohio Water Development Loan, Loan Fund, to authorize expenditure of up to two thousand dollars from the Storm Water, uh, G O Fund, uh, to amend the twenty twenty capital improvement budget, to authorize the transfer of cash and the appropriation within the Storm Water, um, Storm Water Bond Fund and declare an emergency. Uh, this project will mitigate street flooding and yard flooding and reduce, uh, roadside drainage problems within or near the North Linden area of Columbus. Do my colleagues have questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Dorrance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
And finally, we have ordinance zero six one three dash twenty twenty-three, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter a, uh, contract for maintenance and repair services for WQAL Instruments with Allegiant Technologies, Inc., to waive competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Codes, and authorize the expenditure of up to sixty thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars from the twenty twenty-three Division of Water Operating Fund. Um, the Department of Public Utilities Water Quality Analysis Lab has various scientific instruments that require maintenance and repair as serviced by this manufacturer. Um, the equipment is used to analyze and collect water samples as nec- as, uh, necessary for regulatory compliance with clean water laws. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Dorrance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, Council President, that's all I have this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next committee coming for counsel is the Housing Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Favor. Councilmember Flores yours.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Tonight in the Housing Committee, we have ordinance nine zero one dash twenty twenty-three, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to modify a grant agreement with Rebuilding Together Central Ohio Doing Business as ModCon in an amount up to five hundred thousand dollars, to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of up to five hundred thousand dollars from the Neighborhood Initiative Subfund, to allow for advanced payments to the organization in order to pay for reimbursement of costs starting September first, twenty twenty-two, and to extend the agreement term to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and to declare an emergency. On June sixth, twenty twenty-two, Columbus City Council passed ordinance fifteen thirteen dash twenty twenty-two to enter into a grant agreement with Rebuilding Together Central Ohio Doing Business as ModCon in an amount up to three hundred thousand dollars in support of two of the organization's home repair programs. Safe at Home, which is a citywide program that provides emergency home repair and modification services at no cost to vulnerable senior, veteran, and, and/or disabled residents. And the second program is a neighborhood-specific home repair program in the Southfield Marion Franklin areas. This ordinance authorizes the Director of Development to modify the grant agreement in an amount up to five hundred thousand dollars in support of the continuation of funding for these two home repair programs. Director Stevens, would you like to add any additional remarks at this time?
Thank you, President Harden, Chair Favors, member of council. Uh, this is, falls under our housing strategy on preserving affordability and keeping people in their homes, and so these home repair programs are critical, and appreciate the support.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues?
Thank you, Madam Chair, just, uh, very supportive of, of this ordinance. We are re-upping basically this, uh, relationship with the ModCon because we've seen that it works. Um, I'm very happy to join council members and council staff out as we, uh, worked on a house in the Southfield area, um, and, um, they are running through their resources. And so, as, uh, Director said, we see this as part of the preserve, uh, plank of the housing strategy, and thank you for your leadership. Uh, and the truth is, we hope that we can think about these types of programs through, uh, in other targeted neighborhoods throughout the city. Um, but, uh, thank you for your leadership and asking for support.
Absolutely, and just a reminder that anyone in our community, uh, can have access to these tools, and so if you're in need of, uh, doing some repairs, I need to get out there in that lawn, they've got all of those, um, those tools out there for you to rent, uh, and, and to use, uh, as see fit. Uh, with that, I'd move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Dorrance?
I apologize, I think there's a speaker.
Oh, my apologies. I, uh, we do have a speaker this evening, uh, Mr. Nate Wilkins.
Welcome back to council.
Sixteen twelve Arlington Avenue, Mr. Los Angeles, Wilkins. Um, I'm gonna be in support of this, uh, because my mother stayed in Malagrogan at the time, and I tried to, uh, get her house fixed, and I would love to see more money through the state of Ohio with this. I, I just wanna say a few things. My, my mother had lived up into seventy-one years up before she passed away, and, um, I always tried to fix her house, and, um, before she passed, you know, I tried to give her some help, she didn't want no handouts or nothing like that, but I wanted to request of three point five million dollars. Before I lost my mother's house, I had to, um, put some new windows in the house, and, um, I no longer have that house on Peters Avenue, but I would love to see three point five million dollars for this. And because we have a lot of aging people that's in their houses, older, can't fix things, windows, roof, gutters, siding windows, porches, and things, and stuff like that, um, I would love to see this statewide, through Lincoln Counties, through small counties. Um, what I would suggest is something to be put in place beginning in two thousand twenty-two to two thousand thirty-five. Like I said again, I wanna see this money be utilized for the senior population, the disability, and the older population, and also to hear and appear, that's what I don't see enough of, with people that's visually impaired and multi-handicapped, especially in wheelchairs. Um, like I said again, I'd like to see this money, three point five million dollars, and this will be over the next thirty to thirty-five years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your continued advocacy, uh, Mr. Wilkins, in the housing space, we truly do appreciate that. Uh, if there are no additional questions or comments at this time, I'd move for, uh, passage.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Dorrance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance nine thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-three, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to implement the loan forgiveness policy associated with the Housing Division Homeowner Services Program on loans closed on behalf of the City of Columbus and to declare an emergency. The City of Columbus's Housing Division has operated programs focused on stabilizing low-income homeowners since at least nineteen eighty-six. These programs provide critical and emergency home repairs, such as roof replacements, water heat replacement, foundation stabilization, and home modifications. These services are a critical tool to ensure that residents are not faced with homelessness or additional financial hardship. Historically, the programs have been funded by both local and federal funding sources in the form of both grants and loans. Recognizing that there is a limited useful life of the home improvement and value for the city's investment, as well as the importance of ensuring that the city's programs do not perpetuate inequitable outcomes or limit wealth-building opportunities for those who have faced a legacy of systemic disinvestment, the Department of Development will implement a loan forgiveness policy for its homeownership services. Home repair is a key solution to Columbus's housing crisis. By preserving existing housing stock, we ensure that more safe and habitable units stay in our community, and families are able to keep and build generational wealth. However, home repair assistance should never be the reason a family cannot put food on their table, pay their bills, or be burdened with debt. If we can support residents to repair and maintain safe and healthy homes, we can positively impact families for generations to come. This lien forgiveness legislation is an important step in addressing inequities created by redlining and other discriminatory practices and preserving wealth-building opportunities for more black and brown homeowners. This legislation authorizes the Department of Development to establish and implement the loan forgiveness policy associated with the Housing Division of Homeowner Services Programs on Loans Closed on Behalf of the City of Columbus. This is really an exciting, uh, policy that is rolling out. I applaud the Mayor, Mayor Gimther, as well as the Department of Development Director Stevens and his team, uh, for really, uh, working hard on, um, this legislation, uh, for the last, uh, two years or so. Director Stevens, uh, do you have an additional remark she'd like to make at this time?
President Harden, Chair Favors, member of council, thank you for the support on this. This is an exciting opportunity to really impact over five hundred of our residents, um, who have these liens in place on home improvements that were done over ten years ago. It's not going to have a negative budget impact because we don't budget this program and this income from these loans as, as any type of program income. So we'll be able to help people stay in their homes, preserve that affordability, uh, and really help address our housing. Thank you.
Uh, so just a technical question, uh, Director, uh, do residents need to reach out to the department to, to know if they qualify for this, uh, lien forgiveness program?
No, we won't, once, um, council approves this tonight, we will go back and, and look through the, um, individuals who are in our portfolio who meet the qualifications, we will notify them, and we will then move forward with the process of waiving the liens.
Wonderful. Once again, very exciting, uh, policy that is rolling out, um, truly taking a, a comprehensive approach to addressing our housing crisis. Uh, it's more than just putting a shovel in the ground, right? Um, and also passing tenant protections, but also understanding those historic inequities that we talk about, uh, they truly are baked into every step of the home buying process, uh, and this is one way to right that wrong, if you will. Are there any additional comments from my colleagues at this time? Seeing none, uh, once again, just wanna give a, um, round of applause to Mayor Gimther, Director Stevens, for the work that you've done. I'd move for passage.
Say.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Dorrance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, I'll move to ordinance nine fifty-one dash twenty twenty-three, to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of up to one point two five million of twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two Home Investment Partnership Program, grant funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, to authorize the Director of Department of Development to enter into a commitment letter, loan agreement, promissory note, mortgage, and restrictive covenant with Poplar Finn Place LLC for the Poplar Finn Place Project and to declare an emergency. Poplar Finn Face will be placed on a six-point-four acre site on Chatterdon Road in southeast Columbus. The proposed three-story building provides forty-four one-bedroom units of permanent supportive housing prioritized for of permanent supportive housing prioritized for individuals over the age of 55 who meet the state of Ohio's permanent supportive housing policy framework. Of the 44 units, 35 will prioritize individuals who meet the HUD definition of homelessness, and the remaining nine units will be targeted for use by individuals who have a severe mental health diagnosis. Community Housing Network, the developer of Poplar Finn Place, has been providing affordable housing to individuals experiencing homelessness, mental illness, addiction, and trauma-related issues since 1987. CHN will utilize rent subsidies for all 44 units in the property, which will allow residents with incomes below 30% of the area median income to afford this housing. It is estimated that eight units will be supported by home funds. CHN's on-site staff will orient tenants to living in a supportive housing program, assist them with housing-related issues, and provide crisis intervention, conflict resolution, and daily assistance. In addition, residents will also be referred to other agencies for medical and dental needs, material needs, and legal assistance. CHN will also enter into an annually renewable contract with National Church Residence Permanent Supportive Housing Services to provide accredited supportive services at the new facility. Poplar's Finn Place building amenities will include occupational therapy, physical therapy room service, service partner offices, laundry room, community room with full kitchen, and a medical suite within an exam room. Once again, this is a really great project that is helping some of our individuals that fall into that deep, low-income, area median income that we talk about, that is often challenging to develop. And so we appreciate the work of Community Housing Network that does great work in our community. Director Stevens, anything additional you'd like to add at this time?
President Harden, Chair Favors, Members of Counsel, this legislation advances three pillars of our housing strategy: building more units, investing in projects where the market typically does not, and including all our residents in housing opportunities. We continue to focus on housing those individuals experiencing homelessness in our community, and this ordinance advances those efforts by helping to fund the construction of 44 permanent supportive houses. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I would move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Thank you. Counsel President, ma'am, please go back to consent page 15, ordinance 917-2023. We have to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of up to $760,000 of the 2021 and 2022 Home Investment Partnerships Program entitlement grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and to enter into a commitment letter, loan agreement, promissory note, mortgage, and restrictive covenant with the Healthy Rental Homes 7 LLC to construct single-family and duplex rental homes in an amount up to $760,000 and to declare an emergency. At this time, I'd ask, I'd like to postpone to April 24.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston.
Abstain.
Barrosa de Padilla.
Yes.
Dorance.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Remy.
Yes.
President Harden.
Yes, postponed.
Thank you. May I move on to criminal justice and judiciary?
Please.
Tonight, in criminal justice and judiciary, we have ordinance 876-2023 to authorize and direct the city attorney to settle the lawsuit known as Serena Jackson versus Joe Richard et al., case number 221CV0574, pending in the United States District Court for the Southern District of Ohio to authorize the expenditure of the sum of $225,000.00 in the settlement of this lawsuit and to declare an emergency. This ordinance is submitted to settle the lawsuit known as Serena Jackson versus Joe Richard et al. In the, excuse me, that's located in the Southern District of Ohio, case number 221CV0574. On February 5, 2021, the plaintiff, Ms. Serena Jackson, refiled a lawsuit in the Court of Common Pleas of Franklin County, Ohio, against Joe Richard and the City of Columbus, in which she claimed that Joe Richard sexually harassed and assaulted her while she employed as, was employed as a cadet with the City of Columbus Division of Fire. She alleges the city knew or should have known about Richard's conduct and failed to stop. On February 9, 2021, the lawsuit was removed in the United States District Court for the Southern District, Ohio. Tonight, we are joined by Deputy City Attorney Laura Baker-Morish. Do you have any additional remarks you'd like to make at this time?
Thank you, Councilmember Favor. Just wanted to add, in addition to the remarks that I've already, you have already made regarding this particular settlement, that after evaluating the claims and the risks of continued litigation against the city, that the settlement in the amount of $250,000, of which the city will pay $225,000, and Joe Richard will pay the remaining $25,000, was deemed acceptable by the City of Columbus Department of Public Safety. The settlement will also release the City of Columbus and its employees, including former employee Joe Richard. And the last comment I wanted to make is that this was a Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1991 claim that was made.
Thank you for that. And I'll also provide an opportunity for our public safety department to make any remarks they'd like to at this time.
Thank you, President Harden, Chair Favors, Members of Counsel. Allow me to underscore that the City of Columbus does not and will not tolerate sexual harassment in any manner. We have written policies and trainings that are designed to keep harassment from happening. We have policies and trainings designed to inform our employees how to report allegations of harassment. And should allegations be made, we have trained investigators who immediately initiate an investigation. In fact, as soon, in this case, as soon as complaints were brought forward, the Division of Fire leadership elevated them to the Safety Director's office. Swift action was taken to remove Joe Richard from the training academy, and a thorough investigation was initiated. The investigation made clear his actions were unacceptable and incompatible with the values and mission of Columbus Fire. Victims should never suffer in silence. The Director's Office wants to hear directly from any employee who believes they're experiencing sexual harassment. And that's why in 2019, the Safety Director created the Assistant Director of Equal Employment Opportunity Compliance, dedicated solely to EOC issues. The creation of this position allows employees to bypass the chain of command and come directly to the office of the Safety Director. I also want to underscore that in this court case, we refuse to represent or provide an attorney to Mr. Richard for his legal defense. Therefore, Mr. Richard, who is no longer employed by the city, had to pay for his own attorney and litigation expenses out of his own pocket during the pendency of this lawsuit. Moreover, Mr. Richard is now contributing monies out of his own pocket for the settlement of this lawsuit. On behalf of the Department of Safety, I want to express my deep remorse and apology to the plaintiff. Moreover, I want to express to any employee of any employer that if you are being harassed, please promptly notify your employer. And for any person who harasses another, be forewarned of the grave consequences: professional harm, personal, family, relationship harm, financial harm. On behalf of the Safety, I recommend approval of this settlement. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much for those comments this evening. Are there any additional questions or comments by my colleagues this evening? Well, we do appreciate the action that has been taken by the Department of Public Safety, as well as our City Attorney's Office, to try to bring restitution as quickly as possible to the victim in this case. And we can't underscore enough that if any employee should be on the receiving end of this type of behavior, that there are measures in place to ensure that we get to the bottom of it, excuse me, as quickly as possible. With that, I will move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And last, but certainly not least, may I please go back to the Health and Human Services Committee for consent?
Please.
Thank you. Tonight, in the consent, we have ordinance 759-2023, and I will turn the podium over to my fellow colleague, Councilmember Barrosa de Padilla.
Thank you, Chair Favor. Ordinance 0759-2023 to authorize the Board of Health to modify an existing contract with the Ohio State University for the provision of technical assistance services for the period of September 30, 2022, through September 29, 2023, to authorize the expenditure of $45,000 from the Health Department Grants Fund to pay the cost thereof and to declare an emergency. I would like to move to postpone this for the April 24 agenda.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston. Barrosa de Padilla.
Yes.
Dorance.
Yes.
Favor. Remy.
Yes.
President Harden.
Yes, postponed.
And then I'd like to go back to page 17. I'm going to hand it back over to Chair Favor.
Thank you. We have ordinance 866-2023 to authorize the Board of Health to enter into a contract with the Research Institute at Nationwide Children's Hospital for the provision of services allowable under the grant for persons with HIV or AIDS in central Ohio to authorize the Board to modify the budget of this contract for the sole purpose of reallocating funds amongst the vendors in this same program without the need for additional legislation to authorize the expenditure of $86,029 from the Health Department Grants Fund to pay the cost thereof and to declare an emergency. At this time, I'd like to move to postpone to April 24.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston.
Abstain.
Barrosa de Padilla.
Yes.
Dorance.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Remy.
Yes.
President Harden.
Yes, postponed.
I believe that is all I have in my committee.
There's one more, I believe, that, yep.
I was wrong.
So you want to kick it back over to me?
I kick it back over now.
And this is, this should be their last one. Ordinance 2010-21-2023 to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of an amount not to exceed $230,000 from the Neighborhood Economic Development Fund to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of an amount not to exceed $35,000 from the General Fund Neighborhood Initiative Sub-Fund to authorize the Director of the Development, Department of Development, or Designee, to execute a grant agreement with the Tony R. Wells Foundation, Doing Business as a Wells Foundation, in an amount not to exceed $265,000 to provide a one-time cash payment and furniture directly to each leaseholder that was displaced from the Latitude 525 apartment complex on December 25, 2022, and to pay for expenses incurred before the purchase order was approved and to declare an emergency. So we'll talk a little bit more about this when it comes back onto the agenda. But I do want to, Director Stevens, if there is anything that you want to say today, and then we'll talk a little bit more about this when we bring it back onto another agenda.
Thank you. I have nothing to add this evening.
Thank you. So we're going to move to postpone this for our agenda on the 24th of April.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston.
Yes.
Barrosa de Padilla.
Yes.
Dorance.
Yes.
Favor.
Abstain.
Remy.
Yes.
President Harden.
Yes, postponed.
That is all for Health and Human Services, Chair Favor. I'll give the floor back to you.
All right. Why don't we go ahead? You want to go? The next committee coming for counsel is Public Safety Committee, chaired by Councilman Remy. Councilmember, floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Council President Harden, and I have three ordinances in public safety. First one's ordinance 120-2023 to authorize the Director of Finance and Management and Director of Public Safety on behalf of the Division of Fire to enter into a contract for the purchase of consumable supplies and preventative maintenance agreements, respectively, with Stryker Sales Corporation for Stryker Power Load Cots, Bariatric Cots, and Lucas Devices for use in daily emergency services and emergency medical services, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code to authorize the expenditure of $104,028.65 from the General Fund and to declare an emergency. Stryker Power Load Cots are purchased on a continuing basis for installation in all new build emergency medical squads, and Stryker consumable parts, pads, straps, batteries, et cetera, are purchased at regular intervals due to the normal daily utilization of these cots. The Division of Fire purchases these cots and supplies directly from Stryker versus a resale provider, which allows the Division to secure the lowest pricing available. As the Division of Fire has standardized on the Stryker Load Cot product, it is critical for the Division to be able to maintain a stock of both this equipment and consumable supplies. Stryker Sales Corporation LLC is sole manufacturer/distributor and authorized service agent for the Stryker Power Load Cots. Director, could you speak just to the waiver of the competitive bidding on this contract, please?
Chairman Remy, it was about five years ago. Through a competitive process, we chose the Stryker cots. So for uniformity and standardizations, we simply purchase additional parts and supplies and cots each year. This is simply that standard contract. Bidding is waived because we get it cheaper directly through the manufacturer as opposed to going out to distributors.
Thank you very much, Director. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, I have ordinance 735-2023 to authorize a city auditor to appropriate $53,182 within the General Government Grants Fund project to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to associate general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate universal term contract purchase agreements with George Byers Sons, Inc., on behalf of the Department of Public Safety, Division of Fire, for the purchase of a light-duty truck or sport utility vehicle for React operations to authorize the expenditure of $53,182 from the General Government Grants Fund 2022-20 and to declare an emergency. The Department of Public Safety, Division of Fire, requests approval to purchase a light-duty truck or sport utility vehicle for use with the city's Rapid Response Emergency Addiction Crisis Team, React. React is an innovative outreach service operated by the Division of Fire to actively address the opioid crisis. React outreach includes firefighters, paramedics, crisis intervention teams certified, peace officers, a substance use case manager, a registered SUD nurse, a family case manager, and a trauma specialist. Team members assess immediate health needs, provide resource referrals, and create opportunities for users and family household members to link with harm reduction supplies, treatment programs, trauma services, and social benefit supports. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Finally, I have ordinance 778-2023 to authorize the Director of Public Safety on behalf of the Division of Police to modify the current contract with Proto, Inc., for the continuation of towing management services to authorize an expenditure of $1,800,000 from the General Fund and to declare an emergency. The Division of Police is responsible for the safety and welfare of the traveling public on all public streets, state routes, interstates, and waterways, as well as those endangered by parking violations, accidents, or abandoned vehicles and watercrafts within the metropolitan Columbus area, as well as on city-owned land. In an effort to improve the transportation network and access innovative technology, the city sought a smart solution to towing management services. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. That is all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is there a motion to recess? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
We are in recess. We will start zoning in five minutes.
...favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next we have ordinance 0859-2023 to rezon 6500 Tussing Road being 46.68 plus acres located on the north side of Tussing Road, 900 plus feet east of Bryce Road from CPD Commercial Plan Development District and LM Limited Manufacturing District to LM Limited Manufacturing District. The applicant is 93 OHRPT LLC, care of Jill Changeman. The proposed use of limited manufacturing or industrial development, C's Park recommendation is approval, Development Commission recommendation is approval, Far East Area Commission's recommendation is also approval. Do I make colleagues some questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Barrosa de Padilla, Dorance favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next we have ordinance 0879-2023 to rezon 1095 West Third Avenue being 0.31 plus acres located on the southeast corner of West Third Avenue and Oxley Road from N. Manufacturing District to AR1 Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Roby Development, care of Dave Perry Agent, proposed use of a multi-unit residential development. C's Park recommendation is approval, Development Commission's recommendation is approval, 50. Fifth by Northwest Area Commission's recommendation is approval, 41. Do I make colleagues questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Dorance favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next we have ordinance 0913-2023 to rezon 7480 Salmo Road being 1.86 plus acres located on the east side of Salmo Road, 215 plus feet north of Hard Road from CPD Commercial Plan Development District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Skilken Gold Development LLC, care of Drew Miller, proposed use as fuel sales, convenience store and eating and drinking establishment. C's Park recommendation is approval, the Development Commission's recommendation is approval, 40. The far northwest Coalition's recommendation is approval, 42. Do I make colleagues any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Dorance favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next we have ordinance 0740-2023 to rezon 2870 Allen Creek Drive being 4.17 plus acres located on the east side of Allen Creek Drive, 740 plus feet north of Watkins Road from PUD 8 Plan Development District to AR12 Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Homeport, care of Laura Comack, attorney, proposed use of a multi-unit residential development, C's Park recommendation is approval, Development Commission's recommendation is approval, 41. Far South Columbus Area Commission's recommendation is approval, 90. Do I make colleagues any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Dorance favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next we move into the council variances of our agenda. First we have ordinance 0835-2023 to granted variance provisions of section 3332.035 R3 Residential District, 3332.05A4 Area District Lot With Requirements, and 3332.13R3 Area District Requirements of Columbus City Codes for the property located at 1334 21st Avenue to permit a two-unit dwelling for the reduced development standards in the R3 Residential District. The applicant is Healthy Home, I'm sorry, Healthy Linden Homes, care of Emily Long Rayfield, proposed use of a two-unit dwelling, C's Park recommendation is approval, South Linden Air Commission recommendation is also approval. We do have one public speaker signed up to speak in favor of this project, Mr. Charles Lester. Is Mr. Lester here with us? Mr. Lester, do you want to mind raising your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that testament you're about to give shall be the truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer the pains or penalty of perjury? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you. And again, just a reminder earlier on our requirements for folks to be an impacted party, but floor is yours, sir.
Good evening. My name is Reverend Charles Leister. I'm a senior pastor at New Beginning Christian Center, and I'm a member, our congregation is a member of the Bread Organization. And the purpose of us speaking on behalf of this variance and of the efforts of Nationwide Children's Hospital is to support the legislation, I believe there's like 12 variances this evening, related to the Linden area and providing, the goal of which is to provide affordable and safe housing through the Nationwide Children's Hospital, healthy neighborhoods, healthy families. As a member of the Bread Steering Committee for Families First and Housing Now, our campaign, we are grateful to have been working with council member favor on behalf of affordable housing over a number of years because of the extreme need for affordable housing. And not only affordable housing, but safe, stable, and secure housing for our citizens. We are encouraged by significant initiatives that have been announced by the administration in Mayor Ginter's State of the City Address and City Council Harden initiatives recently announced concerning the need for affordable housing and initiatives to address that. We also are working with Mayor Ginter's administration and Franklin County Commissioners to allocate one-third of the American Rescue Dollars available in the county and city for affordable housing. We support council member Dorance initiatives and collaboration with Nationwide Children's Hospital to recommend this legislation resulting in variances for the Linden community to provide not only affordable, but healthy homes for our citizens that their families, especially those making less than $30,000 a year annual income, to afford. Healthy, safe, and stable home environments are not only an impact to adults within each home, but especially to their children. The anxiety, worry, and stress produced by a home environment that is not healthy, not safe, and not stable contribute to violence, verbal and physical abuse, crime, low educational achievement, and behavioral issues, not only for the adults, but especially the children in school. This impacts the achievement of those individuals' potential and their future. Therefore, we support the efforts of council member Dorance and the Nationwide Children's Hospital initiative on these matters. As a religious leader in our community, may I conclude with this fact. The phrase "the poor" appears 639 times in scriptures. This reflects the significant concern of the heart of God for those that are poor and are marginalized in our community. May I, in conclusion, reflect on these two passages from Proverbs. "The rich man's wealth is his strong city; the destruction of the poor is their poverty. He who oppresses the poor to increase his riches, and he who gives to the rich will surely come to poverty." I encourage you, council, to consider that in your plans for our community and ask for wisdom in decisions we make on behalf of all of our citizens for their common good. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. I appreciate you being here tonight and certainly Bread's advocacy on this topic. And I think that the series of variances for the Healthy Homes program is a great demonstration of when things are working well in our community, this is what it looks like. So thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Councilman.
Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Dorance favor, Remy, President Harden.
Accept it.
Thank you. And next move to adopt the findings of staffs, the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Dorance favor, Remy, President Harden.
Adopt it.
And finally, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Dorance favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next we have ordinance 0836-2023 to granted variance provisions of section 3332.035 R3 Residential District, 3332.05A4 Area District Lot With Requirements, and 3332.13R3 Area District Requirements of Columbus City Codes for the property located at 1340 21st Avenue to permit a two-unit dwelling with reduced development standards in the R3 Residential District. The applicant is Healthy Linden Homes, care of Emily Long Rayfield, proposed use of a two-unit dwelling, C's Park recommendation is approval, South Linden Air Commission's recommendation is also approval. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Dorance favor, Remy, President Harden.
Accept it.
And next move to adopt the findings of staffs, the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Dorance favor, Remy, President Harden.
Adopt it.
And I finally move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Dorance favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next we have ordinance 0838-2023 to granted variance provisions of section 3332.035 R3 Residential District, 3312.49C, memo number of parking spaces required, 3332.05A4 Area District Lot With Requirements, and 3332.13R3 Area District Requirements of Columbus City Codes for property located at 1477-1481 26th Avenue to permit a two-unit dwelling on each parcel with reduced development standards in the R3 Residential District. At this time, due to a revised site plan, city staff is requesting postpone this ordinance until our next zoning committee meeting in two weeks. If there's no objections, I move to postpone this ordinance until April 17, 2023.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Dorance favor, Remy, President Harden.
Postpone.
Thank you. Next we have ordinance 0839-2023 to granted variance provisions of section 3353.03C for permitted uses, 3309.14 Height Districts of the Columbus City Codes for property located at 2337 Kimberly Parkway East to permit a multi-unit residential development with reduced development standards in the C2 Commercial District. The applicant is Wode Cooper Companies Inc., care of Dave Perry Agent, proposed use of a multi-unit residential development, C's Park recommendation is approval, Mid East Area Commission's recommendation is also approval. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Dorance favor, Remy, President Harden.
Accept it.
Next I move to adopt the findings of staffs, the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Dorance favor, Remy, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you. And finally, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Dorance favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next we have ordinance 0840-2023 to granted variance provisions of section 3356.03C for permitted uses, and 3309.14 Height Districts of the Columbus City Codes for property located at 4323 East Point Drive to permit a multi-unit residential development with reduced development standards in the C4 Commercial District. The applicant is Wode Cooper Companies Inc., care of Dave Perry Agent, proposed use of a multi-unit residential development, C's Park recommendation is approval, Mid East Area Commission's recommendation is also approval. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Dorance favor, Remy, President Harden.
Accept it.
And next move to adopt the findings of staffs, the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Dorance favor, Remy, President Harden.
Adopt it.
And finally, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Dorance favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Next we have ordinance 0854-2023 to grant a variance provisions of section 3332.38H Private Garages, 3332.21 Building Lines, and 3332.38G Parking Garage of the Columbus City Codes for property located at 51 East Fourth Avenue to permit habitable space above a detached garage with reduced development standards in the R4 Residential District. The applicant is Julia Bullock, proposed use of a habitable space above detached garage. C's Park recommendation is approval, Italian Village Commission's recommendation is also approval. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Dorance favor, Remy, President Harden.
Accept it.
And next move to adopt the findings of staffs, the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Dorance favor, Remy, President Harden.
Adopt it.
And finally, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Dorance favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next we have ordinance 0881-2023 to granted variance from provisions of sections 3333.02AR12ARLD and AR1 Apartment Residential District use, 3309.14 Height Districts, 3321.05B2 Vision Clearance, 3333.15 Base of Computing Area, 3333.18F Building Lines, 3333.255 Perimeter Yard of the Columbus City Codes for property located at 1095 West Third Avenue, permit a five-unit apartment building and a four-unit dwelling on the same lot with reduced development standards in the AR1 Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Roby Development, care of Dave Perry Agent, proposed use of a multi-unit residential development, C's Park recommendation is approval, Fifth by Northwest Area Commission's recommendation is also approval, 41. We have a one public speaker to sign to speak against this ordinance, so at this time we'll have staff provide a presentation for the ordinance. Mr. Dietrich, floor is yours.
Chair Dorance, President Harden, members of council, the applicant has received a recommendation of approval from staff and the Development Commission for concurrent rezoning to the AR1 Apartment Residential District. The applicant proposes a five-unit apartment building and a four-unit dwelling on the same lot. Variances for building arrangement, building height, vision clearance, lot coverage, building line, and perimeter yard are included in the request. Staff finds the request of variances to be supportable as they will allow the site to be redeveloped with a multi-unit residential development that is consistent with the emerging development pattern along West Third Avenue and with the other residential redevelopment proposals in the area, and therefore our recommendation is approval.
Thank you, Mr. Dietrich. Want to invite our public speaker that signed up to speak against this ordinance, Mr. Robert McKnight.
Hi.
Good evening. Would you mind raising your right hand? And I will swear in. Do you swear or affirm the testament you're about to give shall be nothing but the truth as you shall answer under pains or penalty of perjury? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Floor is yours, sir.
Could I get some clarification? I'm five feet south of this property line, and I submitted all the proper paperwork to speak publicly, and I'm here representing a lot of people in the neighborhood who are against this, and I want to make sure it's okay for me to speak.
Is, so I can bring in the city attorney's office. So because it's a variance and council's operating in a quasi-judicial capacity and our decisions here can be appealed to a court, it's limited on who's actually defined legally as an impacted party, which is anyone who owns property within 125 feet of this parcel. That's the subject of the variance. So I don't, I don't know if that answered your question. If you own property within 125 feet of the subjected property, you qualify as an impacted party and therefore you can testify before the body. So if you qualify as that, you can speak before the body.
I'm five feet south of that, so I'm outside of who was notified. However, there was a misunderstanding because the people who were impacted were kind of using me as the filter, and we didn't realize, or else they would have signed up to speak. So I was wondering if you would like to hear from the neighborhood if you can make an exception for me to speak today.
So I'm going to defer to the city attorney's office because the capacity that we're operating in, it matters what evidence gets presented in front of us. So unfortunately, it's not me deciding to make an exception, it's whether or not we make it.
We have other neighbors here that could speak what I wrote.
So, Mr. McKnight, are you representing them in a representative capacity? Are you an attorney or are you their agent?
No, I'm not.
Okay. And you yourself are, your property is where in relationship to the property that's currently before council?
I am exactly one property south of outside of the 125-foot line, so I'm.
One property, I'm sorry, are you adjacent?
No.
Are you in adjacent property? Is there a property between you and the property that's the subject of the variance?
I am adjacent to a property that is affected by this.
So you're adjacent to an adjacent property?
Yes.
Yes. I was not, I was not notified as an impacted party.
Okay.
I'm five feet south of that.
And do you, can you articulate for the record the manner in which your specific property would be impacted by the specific request for variance?
All of the exact same ways that the other six properties.
No, I'm asking though, are you able to articulate how your property, your personal property, would be impacted or not impacted by the requested variance that's before council?
I think I could, you know?
If you're able to articulate how your property specifically would be impacted.
Yes.
Then you would be able to speak. But you have to, it's not about whether or not it's going to impact quote unquote "the neighborhood," it's whether or not the specific thing that they are asking for would impact the value of your property. And this is the legal standard, it's not.
Value?
It's, 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 yeah, it's negative impact upon the value of your property, the ability to resell your property, or the value of keeping it in that particular way, or its use, or its use, or an impact, a negative impact upon its use.
Aren't there parts in the code that say "public safety, health, and welfare"? Welfare is subject to interpretation, but I didn't think it was specifically limited to value.
Those are the things that council can consider in granting the variance or not, but if you're talking about whether or not you have standing to speak as an adjacent property owner, that's a different standard from what the standard that council is addressing when they're making a quasi-adjudicatory decision about whether or not the variance fits within those particular factors. The question is your standing, not, not their decision.
I guess if I were to answer that, I would say yes. I don't have a way to back that up, but.
You have to be able to articulate that, and that's the basis for the particular objection. So it can't just be, we're not in favor of it. It has to be, it's going to actually negatively impact my property. If you're able to make an assertion of that on the record, then you can speak to it. If you're not able to make an assertion that it will personally impact your property, then it would not be proper in a quasi-adjudicatory hearing because this is not a legislative act. It's a quasi-judicial, quasi-judicial act.
I think I can articulate that.
Okay.
So to be clear, you have to, in order for you to have standing, what the city attorney is telling you is that you have to articulate it here, because if, this is on the record for purposes of if, if in fact someone were to appeal our determination, it would need to be included in sort of the forum that is happening right now. So when she says you need to articulate it on the record, unfortunately, we mean, we need you to articulate it right now before us in order to qualify, because you're outside of that 125-foot feet. So we're going one step further and saying, is there a way for you to articulate this? And again, that's not me saying, hey, you know, I need extra from you. You need to be able to say, hey, this variance that's contemplated in this legislation would impact my property negatively, therefore I qualify. I know this is unusual and not what you were expecting to walk up here, and I apologize about that, but that's sort of, again, we're trying to comply with the requirements for, for this body.
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind. Sir, did you say that there were, there are representatives in the room that are within the 125-foot barrier, but they just weren't?
They, sorry, this is loud. They did not fill out the proper.
Sign up.
Yes, because it was.
So, and this isn't what we'll do. So I'm actually going to have a two-minute recess to confer with the city attorney's office real quick, and then we'll jump right back into this, okay? So I'm going to move for a two-minute recess.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Dorance favor, Remy, President Harden.
Recession. Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Dorance favor, Remy, President Harden.
We are reconvening in zoning committee.
Thank you, Council President. So at this time, we just had a prior discussion around who is permitted under the variance rules to speak before council. We do have an impacted party who received notice of this in chambers, so at this point I'm going to call Rebecca Perkins to the podium. Ms. Perkins, welcome to council. Would you mind raising your right hand?
Sure.
Do you swear or affirm that testament you're about to give shall be the truth, nothing but the truth as you shall answer under pains or penalty of perjury? If so, please say I do.
I do.
And Ms. Perkins, so we just had a discussion around folks being an impacted party, so I just want to ask on the record, you received notice of, of this meeting tonight, and you own property within 125 feet of the lot that's the subject of this variance. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And that, that lot is, you are adjacent property owner across the street, just?
It's up the alley from it.
Okay. And you were within the 125 feet, and just saying it again, you received notice of this?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Perkins, the floor is yours.
I even have a copy with me, if you want to.
Okay. Well, you're, you've been sworn in, we'll trust you.
Okay. And again, I wasn't planning on this, so I did send a letter to Mr. Rose, which I'm just going to go ahead and read. Rob had some great notes, and we really trusted him, but I'll go ahead with this, if that's okay. So I just wanted to say that we are in opposition of the building proposal for Mr. Roby at 1095 West Third Avenue, 43212. My husband and I have lived in our home on Holly Avenue since 1994. During our time on Holly Avenue, we have seen the property have various businesses. It also was abandoned for a while before the former AAA Auto Shop took over the property, and the place was filled with stray cats, along with various vermin. As neighbors, we are happy to see the property become residential. We have no problem with the proposed five residential buildings on the north side of the property along Third Avenue. It is the south side with an additional four residences that give us concern. With the renovation and extension on the original building on the site, on the east side, along with the nine condos, the site would be very dense. We as neighbors met immediately when we heard of the present plans for the property. One neighbor, Mr. McKinnis, reached out to Mr. Roby, about five of us meeting him with our concerns, hoping he would work with the neighborhood. The meeting kept getting postponed for a few weeks. When we did finally meet and shared specific concerns, our concerns were brushed off. Mr. Roby promised us addresses of other construction sites, but we never received them. We later found that most of his new builds are huge homes that he rents as Airbnbs. The neighborhood has never been behind the complete project, as I understand Mr. Roby stated in the last meeting in front of city council. Our concerns are, where will visitors to the owners of the condos park? Both Holly and Oxley Road are barely, can barely accommodate parking for the homes there as it is. Where is the green space? Fifth by Northwest has this as a requirement for building, but it was cast aside when they approved these plans. What about garbage pickup? The alley on the south side that separates Grand View from Columbus will not be able to have a Columbus City garbage truck fit, along with the huge green garbage cans that Columbus uses. What if there's a fire? This is our biggest concern. What if there's a fire? If you could see how, how dense that property is, how does a fire truck get in there to provide services? It will not fit behind the alley either. It would be along Third Avenue for those, but what about the other residences that are on the south side? I would like to strongly suggest to anyone who's involved in the process of approving these building plans, please visit the site. You will be able to see from the neighborhood perspective how ominous, overwhelming, and crowded the site will be. And as I wanted to follow up on what Mr. McKinnis had, it's like, you know, it's very tall. Why not reduce the height and provide a basement? It's close to the property line. Why not reduce the units down from 3,000 square feet per unit? I think that's what. I think that's what that means, SF. The surround neighborhood is, on average, 1,200 to 1,500 square feet per single-family home, and it's too dense. Why not reduce the number of units, as I already suggested?
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Do one of my colleagues have any questions for Ms. Perkins at this time? Ms. Perkins, did you attend the area commission meeting that this was voted on?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Were you aware? Yes. I wrote a letter at that time, too. I couldn't make it, I was in the Grand Caymans.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Perkins? Thank you very much. At this time, I would invite Mr. Dave Perry, the attorney for the applicant, to come forth. Allow me to correct the record, Mr. Perry is appearing as an agent for the applicant, not the attorney.
Right.
Mr. Perry, let me swear you in real quick. Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer in a pains or penalty of perjury? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Floor is yours, sir.
Members of council, you'll note that this application comes to you with city staff recommendation for approval, area commission recommendation for approval, development commission recommendation for approval. And I'd like to read, I want to give you a little history, but also, I'd like to read the area commission response, other than their vote, which has already been noted. The chair of the area commission noted on the response form, "Commission finds variances reasonable, taking into account vocal citizen input of Grand View Heights residents, especially resistance to setback on alley side of property." There was a lengthy discussion of the project and the variances, and the commission vote was for approval, but it is significant that the chair wrote on the comment form, "Commission finds variances reasonable." Prior to about August of 2022, this was a different project. It included the whole block from Holly to Oxley. The east end of the site, adjacent to Holly, is developed with the former AAA building and the rest of the block, an outside storage yard. It has a chain-link fence around it. I believe there's barbed wire on some of the outside storage. So, the development proposal that I initially submitted an application for, from Mr. Roby, was the whole block, and then he decided to keep the AAA building, remodel it, expand it, and so on, for his company offices. The Fifth by Northwest plan recommends redevelopment of West Third with multifamily and office uses. We're hitting, we're hitting both buttons on this with the plan, with the office and the multifamily. The office, given the M zoning, did not require rezoning or variances, and that remodeling is probably done by now, or if not, will be shortly. So, when the project changed and part of the block dropped out of the development, I redrafted the application for Mr. Roby, and Rob McInnis and I know each other from other development business. He's an architect with Ford Architecture, and I've done business from time to time with Ford Architecture. So, I knew there were concerns about the previous proposal. I reached out to Rob to say, let's meet with the neighbors to the south, again, Grand View Heights, and he welcomed, welcomed the, welcomed, reaching out, and so on, and in Aug, September of 2022, we met at the site, and then there's been additional correspondence with Rob since then. At the, I don't recall it being, we have different recollections of arranging that meeting versus Ms. Perkins. I don't recall it being postponed numerous times or difficult to meet. Mr. Roby, the project architect, Karik Sherrill, and I met with neighbors at the site for about an hour and a half on an evening in September. Here are the things, the primary things that came out of that meeting. Reduced height on the south building, residents requested no height variance on the south building, and this was in particular their primary request. Eliminate the decks facing south, towards Grand View Heights, and could we make architectural design changes to the south building to reduce the mass? And that was done. Those items were all done. In time, we moved on to the area commission. The result of that was, as I stated, the commission did not find either the development or the variances to be objectionable. The development commission vote was for approval. The planning staff has found this project to be in compliance with the Fifth by Northwest Plan, so we are here before you tonight. And with that, I request your approval. We have also, one other thing, we have also done the city's preliminary engineering process called Preliminary Site Compliance Plan. It's a technical review of many of the city offices, and there were minor items, as is typically the case, but there was no objection from the fire department.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Do one of my colleagues have any questions for Mr. Perry at this time? Councilmember Remy?
Mr. Perry, the, I'm just trying to, all I have is just a schematic, not really, on the, got to find it again. The parking situation, do they have garages underneath the townhomes? And then I saw the 20-foot asphalt down the middle of it, is that, will there be parking there? It's not obviously wide enough, but-
There is an internal driveway accessing the attached garages of each unit. That driveway is 20 feet wide. There will not be parking on that driveway, but parking, parking fully meets code requirement, and it's accessed on that internal driveway.
Okay, and that's two-car garages for each unit?
Yes.
Okay. And then, just tell me how refuse is going to be handled in that complex?
This is, for refuse purposes, this is considered multifamily-
Right.
-under the refuse code. And so, there are two options. You design refuse to meet city pickup standards with a dumpster and bulk pad and so on, or you use private hauler, and this would use private hauler. Each resident will have a 90-gallon can for their garage, and an entity other than the city will pick it up.
Okay, thank you.
Any other council member? Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Yep, thank you.
So, Mr. Dietrich, I just wanted to underscore, so, because again, one of the speakers talked specifically around concerns around fire access. So, again, that is one of the approvals that come through this process, is that our division of fire reviews projects and signs off, is that correct?
They're typically part of the site compliance review, which typically occurs after zoning is approved.
Okay.
Excuse me. The site compliance review that Mr. Perry was referencing, the fire department is part of that review, and they are typically done after zoning is completed.
Okay. Mr. Perry?
Briefly, I can add to that. Mr. Dietrich may not have been intimately involved with our preliminary site compliance plan review, but at the end of the day, the fire department is part of the building permit review process, site compliance plan and building permit review process. So, we believe this complies, but if we're wrong, Mr. Roby doesn't get a building permit.
Yep.
It's as simple as that.
Great, thanks, thank you, Mr. Perry. Any other questions by council members for the department? Thank you. Appreciate the public comment here tonight. As Mr. Perry shared, portions of this project were changed based upon neighborhood feedback. This has had full approvals from all approving bodies at this point. Again, the issues that I think were brought up have been part of the staff review of this project, so therefore, I'm comfortable with moving forward. So, first, I move to accept the entire staff report and do evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk please call the row.
Barosa de Padilla, Dorrance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Accept it.
Next, I move to adopt the findings of staffs, the findings of council.
Clerk please call the row.
Barosa de Padilla, Dorrance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Adopt it.
And finally, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the row.
Barosa de Padilla, Dorrance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 0884-2023 to grant interference provisions of section 3332.035, R3 Residential District 3332.05A4, area district lot width requirements 3332.13. R3 area district requirements, Columbus City Codes, are properly located at 1375 23rd Avenue to permit a two-unit dwelling with reduced development standards in the R3 Residential District. The applicant is Healthy Linden Homes, care of Emily Long Rafer. The proposed use of two-unit dwellings, city's department recommendation is approval. South Linden Air Commission's recommendation is also approval. First move to accept the entire staff report and do evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk please call the row.
Barosa de Padilla, Dorrance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Accept it.
Next, I move to adopt the findings of staffs, the findings of council.
Clerk please call the row.
Barosa de Padilla, Dorrance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Yep. And next, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the row.
Barosa de Padilla, Dorrance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, we have ordinance 0885-2023 to grant interference provisions of section 3332.035, R3 Residential District 3312.49. Mem. number of parking spaces required of the Columbus City Codes. The property located at 1278 East 19th Avenue to permit a two-unit dwelling with reduced development standards in the R3 Residential District. The applicant is Healthy Linden Homes, care of Emily Long Rafer. Proposed use of a two-unit dwelling, city's department recommendation is approval. South Linden Air Commission recommendation is also approval. I first move to accept the entire staff report and do evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk please call the row.
Barosa de Padilla, Dorrance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Accept it.
Next, I move to adopt the findings of staffs, the findings of council.
Clerk please call the row.
Barosa de Padilla, Dorrance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Finally, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the row.
Barosa de Padilla, Dorrance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, I, we have legis, or ordinance 0886-2023 to grant interference provisions of section 3332.035, R3 Residential District 3332.05A4, area district lot width requirements 3332.13, R3 area district requirements, and 3312.49. Mem. number of parking spaces required of the Columbus City Codes. The property located at 1333-1335 East 18th Avenue to permit a two-unit dwelling with reduced development standards in the R3 Residential District. The applicant is Healthy Linden Homes, care of Emily Long Rafer. Proposed use of a two-unit dwelling, city's department recommendation is approval. South Linden Air Commission's recommendation is also approval. I first move to accept the entire staff report and do evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk please call the row.
Barosa de Padilla, Dorrance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Accept it.
And next, move to adopt the findings of staffs, the findings of council.
Second. Clerk please call the row.
Barosa de Padilla, Dorrance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Next, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the row.
Barosa de Padilla, Dorrance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. We have, next, we have ordinance 0888-2023 to grant interference provisions of sections 3332.035, R3 Residential District 3332.05A4, area district lot width requirements, and 3332.13, R3 area district requirements of Columbus City Codes. The property located at 1085-1087 East 18th Avenue, permit a two-unit dwelling with reduced development standards in the R3 Residential District. The applicant is Healthy Linden Homes, care of Emily Long Rafer. Proposed use of two-unit dwelling, city's department recommendation is approval. South Linden Air Commission's recommendation is also approval. I first move to accept the entire staff report and do evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk please call the row.
Barosa de Padilla, Dorrance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Clerk please call the, accept it.
I, next, move to adopt the findings of staffs, the findings of council.
Second. Clerk please call the row.
Barosa de Padilla, Dorrance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Adopt it.
And finally, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the row.
Barosa de Padilla, Dorrance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
The pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 099, or I'm sorry, 0900-2023, grant interference provisions of section 3332.035, R3 Residential District 3332.05A4, area district lot width requirements, 3332.13, R3 area district requirements of Columbus City Codes. For the property located at 1535 25th Avenue, permit a two-unit dwelling with reduced development standards in the R3 Residential District. The applicant is Healthy Linden Homes, care of Emily Long Rafer. Proposed use of a two-unit dwelling, city's department recommendation is approval. South Linden Air Commission recommendation is also approval. We do have a speaker slip this evening to speak against this ordinance, therefore, we will have a staff presentation. Mr. Dietrich?
The site consists of one undeveloped parcel in the R3 Residential District. The requested council variance will permit a two-unit dwelling to be constructed on the site. A council variance is required because the R3 District permits only single-unit dwellings. Variances to reduce the lot width and lot area are included with the request. The site is within the boundaries of the South Linden Land Use Plan, which recommends medium-density residential land uses at this location, which is consistent with the proposal. Columbus Citywide Policy Design Guidelines recommend that the design and character of new development, including homes, additions, and garages, be appropriate and reflect the nearby structures in terms of height, width, setback, lot coverage, and roof pitch. The guidelines also call for front porches, parking located to the rear, open space, street trees, and landscaping. Staff finds that the proposal is consistent with the plan's land use recommendations, C2P2 design guidelines, and development pattern in this neighborhood. As the proposal fits within the larger development pattern of this neighborhood, the request does not introduce an incompatible use to the area, and city departments recommend approval.
Thank you. Want to invite Ms. Dawn Brown to the podium? Ms. Brown, welcome to council. If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer in a pains or penalty of perjury? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you. Floor is yours, ma'am.
I am opposing the project that is by way of the Nationwide Children's Program. I didn't grasp everything, but I'm opposing it because it does change the community in which I've been part of since the mid-'60s. It changes things. I listened to one other speaker mention the affordable housing for families that make $30,000-ish so that they can afford housing. What I'm looking at, as a person who is a veteran of this community, what I am looking at is, sometimes we have different values, and just because the housing is affordable doesn't mean that affordable housing makes good neighbors, because the values are different. So, if this person over here is getting up, going to work every day, working two jobs, they want to go to bed at night, they don't want to hear your kids, they don't want to see all those toys all over the place, chalk all in the street. They don't want to see that. I know I don't, and I'm tired of it. And then you have the parents or the guardians of this mindset, they're not going to bed, they're having people come over with loud music all in the middle of the night. This is a community. So, I say this, 43211 has definitely changed since the '60s. When my father bought this house, we were in company of the Robux, as in Sears and Roebuck. It has changed. I get that part. But just accepting programs at a place, this is not doing anything for our, I can't think of the term right now, but this is an old neighborhood that deserves to be revamped. We deserve respect in our neighborhoods. So, I say move some of these programs to zip code 43085, move them to Muirfield. Let's try some of that. Everything, every experience doesn't have to be with the Linden area. And also, one of my concerns is, if this is some program for Nationwide, it may be, I'm retired military, it may be funded for, under this Linden Home Healthy Program for a little while, but I see it as an extension of downtown and as an extension of Nationwide Children's Hospital, as possibly being in the future a campus where their doctors can be, a complete community to upgrade the hospital, which is fine, but don't put us out. Don't put us out. And I listened to another speaker or someone about the parking in the back that was approved. The city of Columbus is actually fining people for parking in the back over there. So, why is it okay under a program, but it's not okay for people who's been there since the '60s? Get it together. One accord.
Do one of my colleagues have any questions or comments from Ms. Brown? Councilmember favor?
So, just a question of whether you're familiar with the Healthy Homes Initiative on the south side?
No, ma'am, I am not. I'm just learning about this today.
Okay, wonderful. It's actually a really great initiative. It's, it's actually a really great initiative that Nationwide, in partnership with Healthy Homes, embarked on to address the blight that was, has occurred on the south side and put those properties back into good use by making them affordable. And I think sometimes the word affordable gets a really bad rep because we think of folks who might not be working, but they're, they average on medium, targeting around the 60% to 80% of the area median income, which is really around that $60,000-ish range when we're talking about families. So it's working individuals that, that are, you know, working in the hospitals, or they might be teaching in our classrooms. But it, it, it has been a proven model that has worked fairly well on the south side. And I think that as we've been talking about different programs and other affordable housing initiatives, I just wanted to share just that little bit of information-
I appreciate that.
-about what's happened on the south side, too. And thank you for your advocacy and being here this evening.
Absolutely. If we're, if we're, if we're talking about the average income, 40, 50, $60,000 a year, they don't need a program, they just need to work on their credit, honey. They don't need a program.
Any other questions or comments from Ms. Brown?
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. I have nothing else.
Listen.
I have nothing else. I'm afraid to go.
Yep, you are. Thank you for being here. Ms. Emily Rayfield is from, the, from Healthy Linden Homes is also here. Want to pause, if, do any of my colleagues have any questions for Ms. Rayfield? Seeing none, I think we're probably good to move on at this point. So Ms. Rayfield, thank for, thank you for making yourself available. As we've talked about, what this program does is really bring workforce, affordable housing into neighborhoods that are in desperate need of it. Appreciate Ms. Brown for being here this evening, but this program has proven to be a real value add for many families in Columbus already, and the variances that are being requested here tonight seem appropriate to allow this to move forward. So at this time, I move to accept the entire staff report and do evidence as an exhibit.
Second. Clerk please call the row.
Borosa de Padilla, Dorance Favor, Remy President Harden.
Accept it.
And next move to adopt the findings of staffs, the findings of counsel.
Clerk please call the row.
Borosa de Padilla, Dorance Favor, Remy President Harden.
Adopt it.
And finally, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the row.
Borosa de Padilla, Dorance Favor, Remy President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, next we have ordinance 0902-2023 to grant variance provisions of section 3332.035, R3 residential district, 3332.05A4 area district lot width requirements for, 3332.13, R3 area district requirements, 3312.49, minimum number of parking spaces required for Columbus, of the Columbus City Codes. The property located at 1292, 1294, East 18th Avenue permitted a two-unit dwelling with reduced development standards in the R3 residential district. The applicant is Healthy Linden Homes, care of Emily Long Rayford. The proposed use of a two-unit dwelling, city's department recommendation is approval. South Linden Air Commission's recommendation is also approval. I first move to accept the entire staff report and do evidence as an exhibit.
Second.
Borosa de Padilla, Dorance Favor, Remy President Harden.
Thank you, next move to adopt the findings of staffs, the findings of counsel.
Second.
Borosa de Padilla, Dorance Favor, Remy President Harden.
Next move to amend estimate of the clerk.
Second.
Borosa de Padilla, Dorance Favor, Remy President Harden.
Finally, I move for passage.
Second.
Borosa de Padilla, Dorance Favor, Remy President Harden.
Thank you, next we have ordinance 0925-2023 to grant variance provisions of section 3332.035, R3 residential district, 3332.05A4 area district lot width requirements, 3332.13, R3 area district requirements, and 3312.49, minimum number of parking spaces required for the Columbus City Codes. The property located at 1249 East 16th Avenue to permit a two-unit dwelling with reduced development standards in the R3 residential district. The applicant is Healthy Linden Homes, care of Emily Long Rayfield. Proposed use of a two-unit dwelling, city's department recommendation is approval. South Linden Air Commission's recommendation is also approval. I first move to accept the entire staff report and do evidence as an exhibit.
Second. Clerk please call the row.
Borosa de Padilla, Dorance Favor, Remy President Harden.
Accept it.
And next move to adopt the findings of staffs, the findings of counsel.
Second. Clerk please call the row.
Borosa de Padilla, Dorance Favor, Remy President Harden.
Adopt it.
And finally, I move for passage.
Second. Clerk please call the row.
Borosa de Padilla, Dorance Favor, Remy President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, next we have ordinance 0926-2023 to grant variance provisions of section 3332.035, R3 residential district, 3332.05A4 area district lot width requirements, 3332.13, R3 area district requirements, and 3312.49, minimum number of parking spaces required for the Columbus City Codes. The property located at 1550 26th Avenue to permit a two-unit dwelling with reduced development standards in the R3 residential district. The applicant is Healthy Linden Homes, care of Emily Long Rayfield. Proposed use of a two-unit dwelling, city's department recommendation is approval. South Linden Air Commission's recommendation is also approval. I first move to accept the entire staff report and do evidence as an exhibit.
Second.
Borosa de Padilla, Dorance Favor, Remy President Harden.
Next move to adopt the findings of staffs, the findings of counsel.
Second.
Borosa de Padilla, Dorance Favor, Remy President Harden.
Adopt it.
And finally, I move for passage.
Second.
Borosa de Padilla, Dorance Favor, Remy President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, next we have ordinance 0927-2023 to grant variance provisions of section 3332.035, R3 residential district, 332.05A4 area district lot width requirements, 3332.13, R3 area district requirements of Columbus City Codes. The property located at 1457 24th Avenue to permit a two-unit dwelling with reduced development standards in the R3 residential district. The applicant is Healthy Linden Homes, care of Emily Long Rayfield. Proposed use of a two-unit dwelling, city's department recommendation is approval. South Linden Air Commission's recommendation is also approval. I move to accept the entire staff report and do evidence as an exhibit.
Second.
Borosa de Padilla, Dorance Favor, Remy President Harden.
Next move to adopt the findings of staffs, the findings of counsel.
Second.
Borosa de Padilla, Dorance Favor, Remy President Harden.
Adopt it.
Finally, I move for passage.
Second.
Borosa de Padilla, Dorance Favor, Remy President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, next we have variance 0929-2023 to grant variance provisions of section 3332.039, R4 residential district, 3312.49, minimum number of parking spaces required, 3332.05A4 area district lot width requirements, 3332.15, R4 area district requirements, 3332.19, fronting, 3332.26C1, minimum side yard permitted, and 3332.27 rear yard for the Columbus City Codes. The property located at 317 Tappan Street to permit a two, single-unit dwelling on one lot with reduced development standards in the R4 residential district. The applicant is Juliette Bullock, architect. Proposed use is a two-unit dwelling on one lot. City's department recommendation is approval. The Victorian Village Commission's recommendation is also approval, 70. We have two public speakers to speak against this project this evening, so we will now have a staff presentation. Mr. Dietrich, floor is yours.
The site consists of one parcel in the R4 residential district, developed with a single-unit dwelling. The requested council variance will permit a single-unit dwelling above rear detached garage. A council variance is necessary because the R4 district permits up to four units in one building, but does not permit two single-unit dwellings on one lot. The request includes variances to lot width, lot area, fronting, side and rear yards, and a parking space reduction from four required to two provided parking spaces. The site is located within the boundaries of the Victorian Village Commission, which does not include a land use recommendation, but will require a certificate of appropriateness for the final design of the proposed carriage house. Staff supports the requested use and variances, as the proposal preserves the original contributing structure, is located within a walkable neighborhood, and is consistent with similar requests in the area, and therefore we recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Dietrich. First speaker we have speak on this ordinance is Mr. Jeff Long. Mr. Long? Welcome to counsel, Mr. Long. You wouldn't mind raising your right hand to be sworn in, sir? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer to pains or penalty of perjury? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Mr. Long, the floor is yours.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to this issue this evening. I've lived on the streets since the early seventies, was involved in the R4 rezoning effort during that period, also the historic district, and sat on the Victorian Village Commission for a number of years. I object to this variance for several reasons. Number one, there is no historical basis for this building to be put on this alley. Number two, the zoning is inappropriate. R4 requires 2,400 square feet per unit. This lot is only 3,000 square feet. Now, for those of you who weren't here in the seventies, this area was a very dilapidated, torn area. A large part of the problem in Victorian Village at that time was density. We had too many people, too many units, a large number of absentee owners, including those who owned absentee single families. Shortly after I got there, the Department of Development and the society together decided that the way to correct the problem was to reduce density. And in regard to that, we began working on the R4 project at that point, to blanket rezon the entire area west of Neil, south of First Avenue. The area to the east is zoned ARLD, which is a compatible zoning pattern. The idea was to reduce density and encourage single-family owner-occupied properties. And that was passed by council, supported by the Department of Development during that period of time. The success of the program, I think, is apparent at this point. Victorian Village is quite successful now, is essentially an owner-occupied, single-family area, very valuable in that respect. In addition to the R4 rezoning at that point, to give the commission additional leverage, we did the historic district, again to protect the properties and again to reduce density. And the commission was formed to guide that development in the area. The proof of all these efforts for the last 50 years is there today, in the value of these properties and in the community itself. The third point I want to make is, what concerns me more than anything else than the increased density is the precedent or setting. If this is passed, then other people will attempt to increase density as well. This lot does not have the square footage necessary to support two units. Who is to say that the man with 3,200 square feet, 3,400 square feet, is any less able to increase density on his property? The other problem, of course, is absentee ownership. That has been a problem over the years, and one of the things we moved toward was to reduce the absentee ownership in the area. And that, again, has been very successful. I think to jettison the R4 program, which is what this does, it opens the door to more and increased dense usage. To jettison the R4, which has been very good for us, is a mistake, because it allows the possibility that others will come in to increase density on their lots, too, and some more justifiable than 3,000 square feet. The precedent is important because lacking the necessary footage, we need to keep density low there to retain value and the strength of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Do any of my colleagues have any questions for Mr. Long at this time? Thank you. The next speaker to sign up before counsel is Mr. Justin Furman. Mr. Furman, welcome to counsel. Would you mind raising your right hand, and I will swear you in, sir? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer to pains or penalty of perjury? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I just would like to speak to kind of the usage of the property now. The property now is being used as an Airbnb, and with this extra dwelling, I think it's safe to assume that it would be used as an Airbnb as well. So, you know, I'm, I'm not opposed to the, you know, the, the current Airbnb there, or garage, or if the resident, you know, would put that in, but it just seems like putting another unit in to be another Airbnb is just kind of, kind of a, you know, not what the variance, or, excuse me, not what the zoning of the, of the neighborhood is, you know, you know, for, and it just seems like it would be kind of a backdoor commercialization of the property, if you will, from, you know, taking it from a residential. And it just, just seems a bit excessive, and I just kind of oppose that. I mean, as I think a lot of their neighbors do, which they signed a petition, which Mr. Long did, did go around the neighborhood, get quite a few signatures on, which I appreciate his efforts on that. And just kind of in closing, I'd just like to say, as far as the Historical Commission, I did not receive any notice from them. I'm not actually sure how they notified residents of anything. I didn't get any letters of that, so we, it was kind of, kind of surprised that, you know, it came up with the Historical Commission. Otherwise, we would have, you know, gone before that body as well and, and opposed this, this variance, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Furman. Do any of my colleagues have any questions for Mr. Furman at this time? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Next I'll allow the applicant's agent to speak to this project, Ms. Julie Bullock. Welcome back to counsel. Would you mind raising your right hand, and I will swear you in. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer to pains or penalty of perjury? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Floor is yours.
Okay. My name is Julie Bullock, and I'm the architect on the property. So I've been working with the homeowner to develop, to develop this accessory unit. Their plan is to use it for personal use and as a home office on occasion. Both of their parents are out of town, and they also work downtown, and they have a residence in Delaware, so this is kind of a stopping point for them. So that's the intention. This is a very diverse part of Victorian Village. I drove through the neighborhood this weekend, and there are, within the two blocks that this is located, including the block to the south, we have multifamily residential, apartment buildings, duplexes, single-family, and even a fairly new carriage house that is just four units down. So certainly, the precedent has already been set for carriage houses in this area. Victorian Village homes date back to the 1880s, have commonly included carriage houses options. Very few, if any, of the homes in the neighborhood meet the requirements of the R4 district as it stands right now, just simply because it's an urban neighborhood, you know, lot size, lot coverage, et cetera. So I think that's why we have this process, because, you know, the houses don't meet the requirements. And whenever we provide or propose something new, we, we also retroactively ask for variances on the existing house as well. So that's included in this variances. I think the variance requests are actually fairly minimal. Our lot coverage is 1,337 square feet, which is 40% of the actual lot area. When I'm looking at these projects for my client, you know, the city of Columbus says 50% is a reasonable development cover, and so we're well below that. So I feel like the lot coverage is reasonable for our request. I think these carriage houses are a great solution for urban neighborhoods and historic neighborhoods. They allow you to maintain the integrity of the existing historic home, maintain views to the backyard for the original home, while still allowing the homeowners to add to the property. By combining the parking and the space above, it also maintains green space. I truly believe that this is the best solution for historic properties such as these. Victorian Village is a great urban neighborhood, and as such, the values of the homes have skyrocketed. Allowing these types of units provides a more cost-effective housing unit and allows homeowners who might not otherwise be able to afford taxes and upgrade their homes to do so. We need housing in Columbus, we need cost-effective housing in Columbus, and these type of units working within the existing neighborhood context are a great solution to this issue. Victorian Village heard these arguments at their meeting. It was also posted, you know, the city of Columbus now requires us to put a sign in the yard, and they still voted seven to zero to approve it. I trust their viewpoint, I think they're good stewards of the neighborhood, and the commission understands they don't just rubber-stamp carriage houses, they look at the context. And I think when they looked at the context of this neighborhood, there was a lot of discussion. The fact that there are already carriage houses, that there's an apartment building on this alley down on the corner, is the reason that they approved it unanimously.
Thank you. Do any of my colleagues have any questions at this time? Counselor member favor.
So much a question, just a remark, just in general, not even directed towards you, but I, I would say that, just to acknowledge that city council did roll out its housing initiatives that it will prioritize for 2023, part of that is the rollout of an accessory dwelling unit pilot initiative, which does seek to provide additional housing units in the city of Columbus. We have significantly been underbuilding for many years, and this is a response- We have significantly been underbuilding for many years, and this is a response to providing a different type of product in the housing market for residents in the city of Columbus. So, you know, that will be one of the reasons why I will be supportive of this legislation this evening. I do appreciate the two gentlemen that did provide their feedback this evening, but as we really do look to tackle this housing crisis in many different ways, we do have to think outside of the box about how we could address these issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair.
Any other comments or questions from councilmembers? Thank you, Ms. Bullock.
Thank you.
Again, want to thank the folks that came down this evening. It's rare to have someone who's intimately involved going back 40-plus years in zoning matters in the city to come before us to share that, I think, that historical context. And what maybe was true in the 1970s, that I think dovetails right into Councilmember Faver's point of, we talk a lot about density around council right now because density means the ability to produce more units within areas that are connected to transit, connected to job centers, connect, you know, right outside downtown. And of the nine priorities that council articulated when it looked at, when I took over the zoning committee, one of them was appropriate density within neighborhoods, especially if it's connected to transit and job opportunities nearby. This project checks those boxes, it's been approved by city staff, Victorian Village Commission, which, you know, provides additional scrutiny on many projects that comes through, passed at 7-0. Therefore, I feel comfortable supporting this ordinance, and therefore, first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Provoca de Padilla, Dorance Faver, Remy President Harden.
Next, a move to adopt the findings of staffs, the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Provoca de Padilla, Dorance Faver, Remy President Harden.
And finally, move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Provoca de Padilla, Dorance Faver, Remy President Harden.
And finally, in the zoning committee, we have ordinance 0741-2023 to grant a variance provisions of section 3333.18, building lines of the Columbus City Code, so property located 2870 Allen Creek Drive, to permit a reduced building line in AR-12 apartment residential district for multi-unit residential development. The applicant is home port care of Laura Comec, attorney, proposes use a multi-unit residential development. C's department recommendation is approval, Far South Air Commission recommendation is also approval, 9-0. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Provoca de Padilla, Dorance Faver, Remy President Harden.
Next, move to adopt the findings of staffs, the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Provoca de Padilla, Dorance Faver, Remy President Harden.
Next, move to abandon this, member clerk.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Provoca de Padilla, Dorance Faver, Remy President Harden.
And finally, move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Provoca de Padilla, Dorance Faver, Remy President Harden.
Thank you, Council President. That's all we have in the zoning agenda tonight.
Further business coming forward.
The zoning committee, is there motion to adjourn?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Provoca de Padilla, Dorance Faver, Remy President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned.
That's all.
Dorance Faver, Remy President Harden.
Meeting number 16 is reconvened. We are in the finance committee, and I chair the finance committee. Tonight in finance, we have a total of 14 ordinances. The first is-